Okay, John, I've given you host control. I've also given it's, let's see, so you may want to start recording now. And Kathleen, you may want to turn your camera off. And your mic off.
Ryan, I can see you.
Yep. Thanks. Sorry about that. I was trying not to be late and I started two meetings at the same time.
Gee, you're ambidextrous, I guess.
Yeah, that was not a good thing. It was an accident. But anyway, thanks for being understanding.
Oh, not at all. You know, like I said, it's probably gonna be a few minutes before we get through this. I'll give it one more minute before we start. Thomas, I see you.
Hi, Ralph. Hey, Ryan.
Hey, how are you?
Hi, Donna. And I think we're still looking, I assume Tony's gonna join, or did I miss him?
He's not on yet.
Well, it's 6:01. We'll give it 10 more seconds and then we'll get started here. So right now, it's Bruce, me, you, and Donna. And it looks like Dylan's also joined from TO.
Yes, so I'll have Dylan do most of the, answer most of your questions on Lakeview, especially regarding the conditions of approval we have.
Okay, that sounds good. I guess we're at 6:01 for my clock, anyway. So let's, let's get this roll, shell in the road, I guess. So hi, everyone, and welcome to the September 17th Hideout Planning Commission Regular Meeting. And, you know, to that, I really have to start here because we don't have an anchor location. And for whatever that means, we're not all sitting in the same room due to COVID. So I, based upon what Polly was suggesting or asking was, we really need to read this non-anchor location public meeting notice. And that is, the Planning Commission Chair of the Town of Hideout hereby determines that conducting a meeting with an anchor location presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the anchor location pursuant to Utah Code Section 5242074 and Hideout Town Ordinance 202003. The facts upon which this determination is based include the percent and number of positive COVID-19 cases in Utah has been over 5% of those tested since May 27, 2020. The seven-day average of cases has been over 200 since May 27, 2020. COVID-19 patients in Utah hospitals has been significant during the same period. This meeting will not have a physical anchor location. All attendees will connect remotely. All meetings are available via Zoom conference call and net meeting. Not sure what exactly that means, but we do have Zoom going. And you can call in on these numbers below or just connect by the internet. Interested parties may join by dialing in as follows. Okay, well, there we go. So that covers the preamble here. Sorry, we had to go through that, but I think that gets everybody the idea that we're on, that we're on an internet Zoom meeting. To that effect, let's, let's have a roll call. Donna, I guess I see you. I see you here. First.
Yes, here.
And Tony, are you here? I'm guessing not. So there are three of us, and we will continue the meeting. And if Tony joins, we'll welcome him on board. So a couple of things I thought I'd mention, just because there might be a fair number. I see 27 people on the call. Some people are wondering, and I'm not going to go through the agenda purposely at this point, but the important part is, the first part of the meeting, we're not going to really talk about the annexation piece. That'll be towards the end. So if people want to join later, want to take a break in between, you know, I thought I'd give them that opportunity, too. We have turned chat off. And so there won't be, there won't be the ability to typically on Zoom, you can chat. And, you know, later on, when we do open the meeting, you'll be able to raise your hand either on the phone or electronically through Zoom. So we'll go over those details later, but I just thought I'd, you know, make everybody aware that this is not, we're not opening this part up to the public yet. So with that, just trying to think what else we have here. Covered the Zoom, the call. And so what, so one thing, and we're going to talk about that in a second. The first order of the agenda, let me back this up, is the prior meeting minutes. We had two of those. I'm going to present those on the screen and see if we have any comments at this point. Which one is which? So this was the first one. I've got the comment section open. So this is the Word doc. There weren't really a lot of comments that I could see. I read them over. There were some edits, I think, that Kathleen, you made. So terrific. But let me go back up here. Were there any, were there any additional comments that Donna or Bruce, you'd like to make at this point in time?
If I may go first, I did put, I believe in the, in these meeting minutes, I wanted to put on the record what, why I disagreed with the proposal to ban parking in Hideout. I edited it. I believe I put in a couple of sentences. I didn't go into a lot of detail, but it should be in this.
Well, let's, let's, let's run down the, let's run down it. This is the 16th one. Yeah, I see that. Okay. And I remember you said that, Bruce.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that got in the record. It wasn't in, in the original draft document. So I wanted that to be in there.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. Okay, there are roads wide enough. Yeah, I saw that, too. So that makes sense, Bruce, that. And I don't see your comment on the side, but, you know, I guess the rest of these are formatting. So are you okay with that? The way, the way it reads now?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so at this point, I don't have anything further. Donna, if you don't, would somebody like to offer a motion to accept these minutes?
I'm fine.
Donna, you got the, you got the first, first one. Bruce, I guess you, will you second it?
Yes, I'll second it.
Okay, thanks. And I'll take a roll call, but it looks like Tony just joined. Is that right, Tony?
You're on mute.
Yeah. Hey, John, John Hopkins, can you unmute Anthony@hideoututah.gov? Because he's, he's one of the planning commissioners here. We'll wait, we'll wait for Tony to join us audibly, at least. How come we can see you and we can't hear you?
Tony doesn't, Tony doesn't have an unmute button.
Oh, maybe you, Tony, did you, can, if you can hear us, try to unmute yourself in one of the functions on Zoom. I'm going to give Tony a second to, because we need, we need his input here.
On the very bottom left, Tony, if you move your cursor all the way down, it should bring up a little bar. And then on the very left side, there should be a mute unmute.
Yeah, if you can see my screen, you know, just that typically on the, on the user side would go on the bottom. And then you would just unmute here or stop video or enable video. Can you see any of those controls, Tony? Hey, the other side is you could dial in. And maybe we could unmute you that way. You want to try the phone? Can you hear me?
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I hear, I hear myself on the phone.
Very good. We can hear you.
Okay.
Super glad you joined. And so we haven't really gone through much, Tony. We're just going through the first minute, the old minutes from July 16.
No, I heard, Ralph, I've been on since the beginning, so I heard everything.
Okay.
You just couldn't hear me.
I saw your mouth moving, but there was nothing coming out of it. That doesn't.
That's what my wife keeps telling me.
Yeah, me, too. Hey, hey, Tony, so, so I think you know where we are. We're in the approval of these minutes. Donna, Donna, put forward the motion and Bruce seconded it. Do you want to, are you prepared to vote on this?
Yes.
Okay. So is, if that's a yes, I'll take that as the first yes. Bruce?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
And I'll say yes as well. So I guess they're approved. Let's switch off to the second, the other minutes, which are, if I can find them here. Let's try this one here. Yeah, these are the others here. So I'm just going to reduce this a little bit and maybe move it over here. Can everybody, can you see my second screen, which is the July 20th minutes?
Yes.
And I'll go, I'll just run through these here. Same thing for me. I did read these over. I didn't see anything glaring from my end. So I'll ask you first, Bruce, did you have any, any additional comments that you wanted to add or make?
No, I think this was all, that meeting was specifically about passing all the different title. And then, and we got around to voting about the parking as well.
Yeah, Title 11, 10. Yeah, here they are, yeah.
Yep, I'm fine with this.
Tony, any comments?
No, I just have a question. We voted on the parking. How come it wasn't forwarded to the town council?
I don't have an answer to that. Anyone else want to chime in there?
Yeah, I actually attended the following meeting with the town council and they, they discussed it briefly, but it was tabled. So they didn't act on it.
So, and Bruce, I know you had the most comments around the parking. So I'm guessing you're following this closely.
Yeah, that was part of the reason, but I believe it was Kurt brought up as he did in the, because he attended the Planning Commission that 16th or the 20th meeting as well. And anyway, Kurt just said that he didn't think enough of the public had been, you know, there hadn't been feedback from the public, even though we had multiple meetings where the public could have joined us. Nobody from the public did and spoke out about it. So Kurt thought that there should be some sort of communication from the mayor or the, or the town council so that this didn't surprise everybody if it did get approved and voted on. So that's the last town council meeting I was in. And I don't, so I don't know where it got tabled, too, and they're going to pick it up again.
Yeah, that makes sense. I mean, yeah, I think we were all talking, boy, you wouldn't want to just pass this without getting some or distributing some information around because it's such a sensitive topic. So, okay, so that's good input.
Ralph, with all due respect, the bottom line is, how many meetings did we discuss this? And it was put on the website, and if the public doesn't want to join in, that's their fault.
You have a good point there, too. You know, so, hey, Bruce, did they come up with a determination of, you know, how long that would be, you know, out there, you know, one, you know, one, one cycle, so to speak?
I, yeah, I thought it was going to be one cycle. That's what I remember. I haven't seen, I don't seem to have access to the the minutes from that meeting, the town council meeting. So, or I haven't seen it, anyway. So I don't know. If, do they, have they had their meeting or is theirs, theirs was already last week, right?
Most of it was about, you know, the annexation piece, so.
Yeah, yeah.
So, well, in any case, I don't think we're going to be the deterrent. It's out of our hands. You know, we're just the recommending body as opposed to that passing body. So somewhere along the line, so.
Can we make a formal proposal that they address it or at least ask the status of it?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
We spent so much time on it.
I'll take that action. Well said. Okay, so on the minutes themselves, any other, on these, on the July 20 minutes, any additional comments or modifications that anyone wants to make or suggest here?
No.
No, I don't have any.
Okay, I was going to say, I'll take that as a no. So does anyone want to offer a motion to approve these?
I'll, I'll make the motion to accept them.
All right. Thank you, Tony. Second, any second?
I'll second.
Bruce? Okay, voting, Donna?
Yeah, aye.
Tony?
Aye.
And Bruce?
Yes.
Okay, and yes for me. And so they're accepted. I'll reformat them and pass those on to the team after this meeting. Okay. So the next order of business, and let's go back to the agenda here. Wrong order of business. Let's try this one. And the next piece is, we've had, we've had a little bit of, I guess, churn in the Planning Commission. Obviously, I'm sitting here as chair, interim chair, as I would call it. And, and Donna, with the resignations of Sarah, and then today, I think it was John as well. And with Jerry moving and spending his time more on the council, we're kind of down three members. So there's, there's, the discussion here was possible appointment of a new chair. I'm going to ask you guys to say, let's wait on this until the next meeting. I'll serve as interim chair. And let's get, let's get mayor, you know, let's get the mayor's input. If that makes sense, I'll delay that. And you don't want to have to do anything at this point. We'll continue with our meeting. And Donna, now this, you're now a full-time member. You don't have to be an alternate. You're not on half the seat, so to speak. You know, you can take the full seat, which you were, which you were really doing, anyway. So does that make sense so far? Anybody have any issues with keeping this as an interim, at least on my part, until we get some further input from the mayor?
You're only postponing near inevitable, Ralph.
Be quiet, Tony.
And let me just say, so first of all, let me introduce myself to you all. I'm Polly McLean, and I am the new town attorney taken over for Dan, Dan Z. And just so you know, kind of my background, I've, I live and breathe planning commissions. I worked for Park City Municipal as their main planning attorney for almost 14 years. And I currently represent a couple of towns, as well as now Hideout. So I know a lot about planning, although not as much as someone like Thomas, but from a legal perspective, I do. And so, nice to meet you all and see your faces. And then just as a quick aside, I believe that the mayor technically will have to appoint Donna as a full-time member, but I imagine that, I don't anticipate there being any issues with that. But I just wanted to point out that formality probably at their next town council meeting.
Hey, thanks, Polly. And I, yeah, I wanted to get to you introducing, you know, the folks who are here from the, from the, and you're new, so. Well, that's good input. So we'll wait on, we'll wait on that as well. But as far as I'm concerned, Donna, I think it's a, kind of probably a foregone conclusion. So we're, let's, let's operate, you know, the way we should in a, in a positive way going forward. The other thing I was going to say is, you know, we've had some resignations, and that means there's some opening. And before that, you know, it's like, I just want to say personally, I thought, I didn't have to think. I mean, Jerry did a very detailed, terrific job. So I don't know how much to thank him and, you know, for his leadership on, you know, on the Planning Commission and now on the council. So Jerry's, you know, it was like, if, if there was a word to be caught in the minutes or in a document, he probably nailed it, you know, so. I'm, you know, I just want to give him all the recognition, too. I thought Sarah, as well, did a great job considering, you know, she's a medical doctor. She spends her time, you know, coast to coast. And given the fact that Jerry, myself, Kurt, and Sarah all joined at the same time over two years ago, we kind of got, you know, we got involved at literally the same first meeting. I thought, you know, all three of those folks just did a phenomenal job. And I have to hand it to Sarah, being so detailed, being, you know, a continuing physician and juggling, you know, some serious stuff in her life. So just like to say thanks, you know, personal thanks to those folks. And, and Bruce, I'm sorry, and John is not here. And I kind of miss his English accent. So I thought he added a nice kind of, you know, different tone to the meeting. And we're going to miss him as well. He didn't get that well into it. But so the other thing I would say, if there's anybody listening in on this, we would love to have some more folks from town kind of jump in, offer their names, I think. And Polly, keep me honest on this one. It's, you just have to be a resident of the town, voting resident of the town, I believe, for 365, the last 365 days. Correct me if, I think those are the two mo, two primary requisites, but correct me if I'm wrong, follow.
I think that's right. I'm going to take a quick look at your code on that, but I think that is absolutely right.
Thanks. And, and I just want to say, this is my third Planning Commission or, and board, two on the East Coast. But, you know, I remember when we were, I was trying to recruit Tony to come aboard. He was probably kicking me, kicking, kicking and shoving. I would just say, you know, it's, it's not that hard. It's, it's interesting. So I would just solicit folks sitting, you know, out there listening on the call to get involved. There's always some interesting discussion. And the Utah League of Cities and Towns will provide some basic training, which you all go through. It's not, it's not particularly, you know, burdensome. So if you've got that interest and you don't have to have much knowledge, so to speak, just mostly interest and drive, I would encourage those people to approach the mayor or myself at this point, or maybe anyone on the, on the Planning Commission. If that makes sense. Okay, so what else was I going to at least allude to? Oh, yeah, I was, so anyone who's on the call that's unmuted, don't mute yourself using the Zoom meeting mute, because you will be put on mute kind of permanently unless John Hopkins is going to, you know, unmute you individually. So my suggestion would be if you have a hard device, like a headset, and you've got it, you know, you've got a control on that or you're working with something else, use that control to unmute yourself, to mute yourself and unmute yourself, if that makes sense. So all the little glitches of, you know, dealing with Zoom meetings here. And so anyway, let's, I think we can go on at this point. The next piece is the review and potential recommendation of the final flat for Lakeview Estates. And before we do that, I think, Thomas, you're on. I can see you. Uh, and, and before we do that, I think To, uh, Thomas, you're on, I can see you. Um, and who's here from TO? Is, is it Ryan or Diller? Or both? Ryan, I see you. Um, so I'm assuming. Thomas is trying to say something, so he may have muted himself. John, can, can, can you? You're still on, you're still, you're still listed as mute. You got your hand raised. Um, John Hopkins, can you unmute Thomas? Because he's gonna be an important part of this piece as well, Ryan.
Thank you. I will not mute myself again.
I guess I didn't catch you in time. So.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, our tricky controls here. Okay, so I just wanted to say, I think we have, um, yourself and Ryan and maybe Diller on board here. And, uh, so, to that effect, uh, let's, let's pull up the documentation, and I think Nate, or is, we need to, we, we need to, um, unmute, uh, Nate and his team. And Nate, can we hear you? Are you on?
Can you hear me?
Hey, I, we can. I can, anyway.
Yeah, if you unmute Paul Watson, he's my engineer, he will be doing most of the talking.
So John, um, if you can unmute. And. Paul, can you say something?
Yes, I can hear you fine.
Oh, I can hear you too. Okay, cool. So, uh, I'm gonna start, well, first of all, any comments from Ryan? I know you, you've written a report, um, you've given some recommendations. And then, um, Thomas is on. I would ask, are there any high-level comments before we turn it over to you before? You know, and any thoughts that you, you want Nate to address, or, or, uh, is it Paul again? Um, who's gonna, who's gonna lead this discussion?
I don't have any. I think the report speaks, my report speaks for itself. There are a few conditions of approval. Um, if I had to say anything, it would be that I think Nate and, and we've worked very well together. And I think we've come up with a, with a great plan, um, that's going to do, um, serve Nate and the development well, and then also provide some, some great benefits to the town and, and some much-needed things that, uh, were otherwise gonna be a problem for us to get, get accomplished.
Fantastic. And, and Thomas, do you have anything on this?
No, I don't have anything to add yet. I have been able to connect with both Paul and Nate. And so a few conditions of approval that will come subsequent, but other than that, no, I agree. I think the, 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 the product has turned out quite well for the community over the past few months of effort. So thanks to them.
Thanks, both of you guys. Polly, I don't know if you need to chime in on anything, but feel free to at this point before we turn it over to Paul.
No, I've looked over everything, but I don't have anything to add.
Okay, so, hey Nate and Paul, it's kind of like your baby here to, to take us through.
Okay, and we have it in front of you before, obviously, and I, we've made several changes. I think we've got a good product, so. Really here, mostly to answer questions if you have them.
And I'm gonna try to pull up. Trying to see if I have that plan in front of me, or at least through your report. Actually, that's what I was looking for right now here. Um. Yeah, give me a second.
Well, Ralph's doing that. I have a question, uh, that either one of you, you know, one of the, Thomas or Ryan or, uh, or Paul could answer perhaps. Uh, this, the, the width of the roads, um, are they wide enough? Are they the thirty-foot-wide, uh, roads required? If this resolution that we've put forward to the town council about, uh, no parking on any of the streets in Hideout, um, the roads have to be wider than most roads that are already in Hideout. Um, do with this, would these roads qualify, or would there be uh, off-road parking put in by the developer?
Paul, I think you'd be best to answer that.
All right. So the road across section that we have is thirty-one feet from top back a curb to top back a curb. It's a modified curb, so you can park on it. So I think we are following the, the city standard for, for the roads.
Okay, and so there'll be, I didn't, I didn't see as I went through this anyplace other than around the park area, um, in phase two, I think it was, right? Um, where there would be some parking. So there's no, there'd be no off-street parking anywhere in this.
Correct. Yeah, the only off-street parking we have is just right by the park area.
Right. And.
My other question, um, and I can't really see the lot numbers, um, but on.
And actually, could I, could I make a recommendation? Mr. Chairman, could you go to the next plan? That was their originally submitted one. If you go down one page, that'll be the newer plan. You might be able to see that park and parking, and then, uh, Mr. Wolfie can ask his.
Am I on the right page?
That's the right one. That's the updated one. Yes.
Sorry.
Yes.
Ah, okay.
Good. It'd be nice to get this on a big screen and enlarge it since it's, you know, since my eyes are not that good anymore either, even with the glasses sometimes, so. Um, can we see that? Can we get this centered here a little bit? Maybe just go back one.
Can I ask you a question? So Paul, I thought we had some parking in here. Is there a place we can put some parking stalls? Because in Deer Waters and in Deer Spring, mainly Deer Waters, those get used quite a bit, whether it's people, you know, driving to the trail system, or is there a place we can sneak in some of these parking stalls?
Yeah, yeah, there's, in where we have parcel B, I could add some additional parking there. Um, parcel G, I could add some additional parking there. It's, if you guys like.
That would be great.
If the planning commission wants them, it sounds like they're trying to get away from all the parking on the streets. So I think, and I know every time I come up to Hideout, those, uh, those stall, those parking stalls in Deer Waters are filled. It's probably with construction workers, but I do think it's a, a great idea to have those.
Yeah, and the ones in Shoreline, um, get pretty well-used from, from my hiking around and, you know, um, and they're just nice to have, because otherwise you're only parking a couple of cars in your, your driveway, and, um, you don't want to start filling up both sides of the streets.
Well, let us, if you guys are okay, let us work with Thomas on that, and we'll get those added in before the town council meeting. And, uh, we'll send, um, you know, we can send those out for you guys to review, you know, to Ralph if he wants to forward it, but we can get those on there tomorrow. But I think it's a good idea.
And I, and I, it looks like upper left, is that what you're talking about? Parcel C, you could put some up there? And also.
Actually, I could, yeah, I could actually fit a few more in there as well.
Yeah, and, and even, oh, that's Storm Sewer. Okay, I was gonna say, partial G, the, between the two sections on the, on the right side was this Storm Sewer. I don't know if you could put in a couple in there too. I don't know, because it kind of seems like, if you're not on the ends of the section of, of lots, you're gonna be, they're gonna have, you know, not gonna have that much parking. Um, so I don't know if you could stick a couple in there too. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, just so you know, every, all the, we'll have two-car garages and a two- or three-car garage, and then everyone will have two cars in the driveway. But obviously, visitors and hikers and people are walking their bikes, you know, riding their bikes with their dogs. So let us put those in. We'll, we'll get those sent out to, to, uh, to Ralph, but, you know, I think we can find a place to add ten or twelve stalls pretty easy.
Yeah, that would be great, Nate.
Yeah, so we'll do that. We've done that in Deer Waters, and honestly, it really, it, it, it's, it's really nice to have those.
And if you make it nice, like I, I really like what you did in Shoreline, and to put some landscaping around them.
We will.
Yeah.
Yep. So we do, one thing they didn't do in Shoreline is they didn't do high-back curb. We, we do high-back curb around the park, and so they can't drive over and hit the, hit the grass. Um, our, our stalls are ten feet wide, um, so they're a little bit wider. Yeah, so yeah, let's, let's add those for sure. I think that's a great idea.
Okay.
Sounds like two good recommendations, um, or positive, positive movements. Um, I had a few questions or thoughts or concerns, but I want to make sure that, uh, you know, Bruce, Tony, and Donna get any of their thoughts out first.
My other question would be in, again, phase one, on those four houses, as we're looking at them, they're on the left as you come in from Deer Waters. What are, what's the topography there? Are those houses looking right into the backs of the houses to the left of them?
Yes, yeah, every lot up here is basically a walkout basement or a walkout upper story. I mean, that's how I'm taking up a bunch of the grade. So those four lots will, I mean, they are higher in elevation than the lots next to them, so they will look into them and over them.
Which is nice for the views.
So they will look over, they're not looking right into the back, like, I know in Deer Waters, there's some, some of the houses which back up to each other, um, are just awfully close.
Yeah. We're, we're about, oh, twenty-six, twenty-eight feet in elevation. So it should look just right over the roof for.
Okay. And is there gonna be a retaining wall there? Is that where, I remember we were talking about huge retaining walls at one point, but I think you've redone the design.
Yes, yeah, before we had two ten-foot walls, and now we're at one twelve-foot wall in that area.
Okay, so what's the setback from that wall to each one of those, um, those footprints?
So the walls are a vertical wall in that area, so it's right down the property line, and we have a twenty-foot setback in the rear yard for each of these lots.
So there'd be forty, forty feet?
At the minimum. Some of the lots are a little bit different, where you have the twenty and twenty-five in the front. So the forty is the minimum between the building in the rear on those lots.
Yeah, Ralph, and I think what you're talking about, last time we brought this, uh, we, we've changed the plan quite a bit. We had, we had one wall that was thirty feet in a couple different areas. We've completely got rid of those walls with this new redesign, thanks to Thomas. You know, we spent, Thomas and Kurt, uh, we spent several weeks redesigning this and getting rid of those big walls, but there were a few places we had thirty-foot walls. Um, and we do not have those now with this new design.
That's excellent, yeah. And I, that, that, so I was, that was my, one of my three questions, the same one as Bruce here is, is, you know, dealing with the retaining walls. Um, one, they, they're, you know, they need, they can need maintenance over time. Two, there's, you know, they're always structurally sensitive at some point, depending on what you run into. And three, they're, you know, kind of an eyesore, if you can kind of get away with, you know, not doing them. So that's a great, that's a really excellent change. And what about, hey, speaking of, well, I, I don't want to, you know, um, not have anyone else ask on the retaining walls, because that's such an important topic, but, um, uh, the, the drainage channel, or we, did, you know, is there any, any update on that? Because at one point, it was retention basin, I think, and then a detention basin. Um, and I saw, um, Ryan's comments in, I believe, uh, you know, in this report, we can go down. Are we okay with that piece? With the, with any modifications there? I think I just passed it. Here it is. It just, it, so to these comments here, um, the proposed retention basin is in the same location as originally envisioned, but occupying less area. Um, and I don't know if the embankments changed, uh, but any comments on this one in terms from our, uh, from our town engineer?
I believe the final design is in compliance with, with those things that we talked about, um, in, in Thomas's report as well as ours. Um, we've reviewed the stormwater, and I think this, this development is, is, is compliant um, and, uh, better than a number of developments that were done in the past.
Good.
Thanks, thanks. So, any, I, I have one more comment, and maybe it's my biggest comment, Nate. Um, and that is, I'm gonna pull this chart up. I think I have the right chart. These are the, you know, these are the kind of, I guess, call it, not, maybe I'm not using the right word, but maybe that's where I've used previously, kind of a variance here, you know, you're, 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 um, you're not really dealing with the norm, and there's a lot of yellow here.
Ralph, that's completely changed.
That's completely changed.
Yes, and I don't know.
So I'm gonna, so just let me finish this comment, but, and I, I want to hear yours as well. So those seven and a halves, um, they wouldn't fly with me at all. We've been trying to move the other way, Nate, you know, in our new, in, in the new zoning. Now, you fall under the old zoning, of course, um, which is ten, but, you know, it's killed the view sheds on a lot of homes, and I can't imagine that would be a very positive, um, development, you know, uh, focus. So how are you dealing with this? This is my probably most critical question that I, that I want to get into a little bit.
Yeah, so we, instead of, uh, instead of asking for a variance on those side yards, we, we shrunk our home down, uh, by five feet.
So are all these now ten and ten on each, on left and right setback?
Paul, will you answer that? There is a couple lots that we have, but I don't think it's on the side yard. I think it's on the rear yard, that it's not twenty, but it's fifteen. With the new, with the new plan that we did, I think there's three or four lots that, uh.
And actually, Mr. Chairman, if you could go to my report on the third page, I think I list those. That would cover it for you, Nate, and maybe Paul, there were a couple that went down. All of your side yards are now ten feet, so you're not asking for any exceptions there. If you go up to.
Are we going back up or down here?
Go, there you go, right there. I think, and Paul, I don't know if, if you've had a, a second to look at these, but you could confirm these. I think it ended up being these, what is it, uh, seven lots, where you had an exception from the rear yard setback from twenty feet that was required down to as low as fifteen on three of them. And, um, the, part of the reason for this was to help eliminate, um, scale, size, height of retaining walls. And so there were some, uh, some, uh, recommendations for rear yard setback reductions, and that's what you see here. But, um, the side yard setbacks are all ten feet, and the front yard setbacks are all twenty or twenty-five, kind of creating that alternating, um, facade along the street.
Oh, that's great. That's really great input, because I know, um, I think we could live with a little bit of less on the, on the front and back. Um, but it's the side yard setbacks which have killed the views of, of the second homeowner coming in and just, you know, putting their home right up next to someone else. Now, I know you're, you're designing this, you know, organically, so that's a big plus right there, and, and you don't want to do that. But when I first looked at this, I'm going, you know, we're really trying to build out a little bit more setback on the side. The rears we could live, the rears we could live with, particularly if it's just a retaining wall, you know? Um, but you don't want that retaining wall in your house either, so.
Yeah, and as you know, there won't be any fencing, so you really, on, on a lot of those lots, you won't even know that it's fifteen feet that, you know, because there's no fence, we're not doing any fencing. And that, that spreadsheet that I sent you was if we were to keep the exact same-size building footprint that we had with our previous plan. And one of the big drivers with the previous plan is that you guys wanted an entrance down below to get to GCD's project, I think it's called Shoreline, down there, so you had more, um, connectivity.
Yeah.
So basically, I mean, we, we changed our entire plan, and when we changed our plan, I was asked to, just, from each of those lots, I was asked to give what setbacks that we would need to keep the same, uh, size and style of home. And, and that's, that's when I sent that spreadsheet to Jerry, so he could just see that. Um, but in talking to Thomas and Ryan, it was, it was known that you guys didn't want to come off those, that seven and a half, or, you know, down to the seven and a half feet. So we just shrunk our home by, by ten feet, or five feet, sorry. So yeah, we, we meet those requirements now.
Well, that's, that's good. That's, that's a really positive trend. Well, those are my three. Um, and should, uh, any, any other, um, concerns, gotchas from, uh, Bruce, Tony, or, or Donna? And I, I thought maybe the last piece we would do is just go through, um, all the recommendation section. Uh, you know, that TO put together here, so does that make sense? First, I just want to see if there's any additional comments from the from the commissioners.
Um, the only one I have was the parking and that was addressed.
And let's see if we can't, thanks, Tony, let's see if we can't find your, the recommendation section. Um, so you want to lead us through this, um, a little bit?
Sure, sure, I'd be happy to. Um, if we could unmute Dylan, um, he he wrote most of those, I think he would be, uh. I I I would like him to go through those if possible, if if not, I'm happy to go through them.
So, uh, John Hopkins, you're gonna have to unmute Diller.
Yeah, sorry, I just, I have a bird, so I never, I just want to make sure that that's not getting in the way of the meetings, that's why I muted myself, sorry about that. Um, I can go through each of these, uh, the they, several of these, uh, they've taken care of, I believe, at least this first one. Uh, there's a drainage channel that's mapped, um, going through the property. Uh, and we just requested that a wet lensy called, uh, ecologists kind of look at that and make sure that they've managed it properly. Uh, we've received that letter, uh, this condition of approval or recommendation has already been satisfied. Um, so I think we can move past that one. Uh, is there any questions on that one? No? Okay.
I don't have any now.
All right, and then on, I, the, it's just kind of standard to have, uh, just to present will serve letters from the utility providers. Uh, we don't anticipate that to be an issue, uh, but that will just be required. Kind of when they, uh, go to get their construction permits and, uh, get their bond, uh, in place. Uh, number three, uh, is just to discussing the plat that'll need to be presented. Uh, according to the setbacks and the various different, um. Uh, things in this plan set such as snow storage, uh, PUEs and, uh, any other pertinent notes and deed restrictions. This is standard for the town, um, and this will need to be presented, uh, prior to issuing, uh, building permits. And I don't, I'm not going to read these word for word because I want to try and explain them, uh, maybe I should be reading more forward. Uh, number four, uh, is with regard.
No, there are no easements though, right?
I don't believe so. They, wait, there's a power line easement, is there not?
Yes.
Yeah, th- there is the power line easement and that's kind of a standard, uh, comment you'll see from us on most of our, um. Reviews that we would like read it and as part of the, um, conditions of approval, just so that, you know, when we when we get the plat that we can make sure all these things are there.
Yeah, so we'll review it, uh, obviously, uh, before it gets recorded.
Good.
Um, regarding the the sewer system, uh, the wastewater collection system. This is part of a project that we've been working on throughout the whole town. We're working on a capital improvement plan for. Or capital facilities plan for the, uh, the town, uh, for both the water and sewer system. Uh, there's been, uh, there wasn't, that we didn't have a plan, uh, established for the town pri- previously or a model. Uh, so the model is up and running, um, and we've looked at Deer Waters, uh, their sewer system right now. Uh, Deer Waters phases one and two go to a lift station, uh, directly north of the west property line, that line you see on the left. Um, and it's a little lift station, uh, that we see being a maintenance, uh, difficulty down the road. Uh, additionally, Deer Waters Phase Three, which is east of here to the right of the, uh, the the plan. They, sorry, I'm looking at my plan set too, so, uh, they had one in their plan set for Phase Three, so. This, by using Lakeview Estates, we're able to collect all of the, uh, the, um. The sewer collection from both of Deer Waters and Lakeview. And, uh, we've instructed Nate to and Paul to have their, uh, sewer connect into Shoreline. Phase two, um, and this project in condition number four, uh, discusses the needs for Nate to. Uh, assist in making the lift station on Vantage Lane and Shoreline Phase Two, uh, sufficient to handle the. Uh, all of that wastewater, so it's an improvement and Nate's been on board, uh, with making those improvements. It was that or put in a new lift station within Lakeview Estates, uh, in the plan set that we're looking at today. Uh, but fewer lift stations is fewer maintenance and thus more affordable and efficient for the town. Um, I think that covers it for that, but I'm sure somebody would like to chime in on that.
I guess I would just add, this is kind of a shift from what we have done with some of the developments in Hideout. And and we're looking at this one more as a community and and trying to build the best system for Hideout that Hideout can maintain. Uh, what we've got in the past is every individual development kind of had their own water and sewer needs. We've got a bunch of small pressure zones throughout the town for every every development has their own pressure zone. Um, every development has their own lift station and what we're trying to do is get away from those small lift stations that are are very problematic. Um, and the small pressure zones that are also cause problems down the road and create one water and sewer system for the whole town. And and kind of get away from these individual development lines and and I think this is is going to be one of the things that makes. Uh, the Hideout infrastructure more successful, um, in in years to come is. One of these is these regional facilities that are are must much more cost effective to maintain.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense, um, and and, uh, how is the, is is any of the cost shared between the various, you know, and HOA entities? Or is that, is, would would that be a a separate issue entirely?
Um, uh, they are, so what we're talking about with the water and sewer, they are town utilities and so the town is responsible for the maintenance. And so what what we've been trying to do is find a win for Nate while finding a way to minimize the town's expenses both now and in the future. And so, um, Nate's in a position where he has to build two of these small lift stations. Or he could help us improve one list station that that we already have some issues with, um, and and no funding to improve it. And so, um, by using the money that Nate was going to spend on two new lift stations to improve the lift station we have. We have two maintenance headaches that we don't get. Um, and then we get improvements to the list station that we wanted improved, and so I think it works out very well for everybody.
Well, that sounds like, again, um, something that is going to work to the benefit of the town.
Yes.
Definitely, uh, number five, uh, discusses the retaining walls. Uh, we're satisfied with the reductions in the heights for the retaining walls. Uh, they've adjusted their gratings and their setbacks as they've discussed and their lot sizes to reduce those wall heights. However, they still need, uh, to have a geotechnical design, I believe that they're intended to be. Uh, either a rockery, a boulder retaining wall, and, uh, they do have some vertical walls, uh, which likely will be, uh, some type of. Uh, either keystone or ready rock, uh, which are very nice looking walls. Um, and we'll just need to have plans for those and sometimes it's helpful to get the grading on the site, uh. Going, actually, let's see, sorry, this is prior to abstaining, they need to send those prior to obtaining construction permits, but. Uh, we're fine with, uh, that that delay in getting those retaining wall plans, uh, we don't anticipate any issues. Uh, with their retaining wall heights that they've proposed, um, previously with the. Very tall retaining walls, uh, we may have needed those plans beforehand, but I think that we're, uh, good to pers- uh, continue as we've mentioned here.
Uh, stop there, would you stop there for a second? So, um, uh, thanks Dylan. Um, yeah, I I, you know, having been around retaining walls for in a few different areas of the country, I I I agree, you know, when you bring them down below. A certain level, there's less of an issue. One of the issues, and this does not necessarily reflect on this particular project, but. Our previous engineering, um, individual who, um, didn't have a geotechnical on staff. Do you have a geotechnical at TO on staff or do you farm that out?
We we don't.
Yeah, we we don't have one on staff, we we farm out the official geotech reports, um, we we do, Dylan and I both have an an. Fair amount of geotech experience to to know when when we need to call somebody and and when something looks a little fishy.
Okay, and given, given that not super height, height on these walls is probably not that critical. I just was kind of curious if you guys had one on staff because there's not that many, but you know, they're, they're worth their weight in gold when you when you kind of need them in these situations.
Yeah, and the the, uh, the company that we would, uh, sub out to would be most, most likely AGEC. And they have, uh, very experienced retaining wall engineers there, so.
Yeah, and we'll use, uh, we'll use CMT and then I guess AGEC can review those.
Be the reviewer, yeah.
Yeah, so we'll use CMT, um, the reason we didn't do those before is because we didn't know if this plan was going to get approved. If you remember, probably four or five months ago, it's taken us lo- this long to get back on the agenda. Uh, we had a plan that we thought was good and it met all the requirements, but several council members and planning commission members did not like it. And so we just basically started over and so we worked out with, uh, well, we talked to Ryan about not spending the, um. Money to do the walls until after this was approved and we won't start until those walls, the engineering is approved. You know, and and turned into the city or the town on those walls, but it was just kind of a, we just didn't know if this plan is going to get approved or not. And so there's no reason to spend, you know, twenty thousand dollars on plans for the walls if if this plan does not meet your guys' requirements.
Yeah, makes sense. Okay, um, a- 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 any questions so far from the, from the commission on any, uh, as. As we've gone through, I think we have a couple more things to go through, but you know, that those were the big, those those look like some of the big areas there.
Yeah, the things that are remaining, just so I can completely open it for discussion or questions, uh, six is just water and sewer reports, that's where the. Uh, Paul would would model the water in the sewer system, uh, this, uh, as far as the sewer. That would likely be done more in conjunction, uh, both of these would be done in conjunction with us since we, uh, have the. The whole town water and sewer models, um, in our possession, so, uh, they, we would just need them to present. Uh, for example, on the water plan, that would be establishing pressures and, uh, placing any, you know. Quantifying the need for PRVs and what those might be set at, et cetera. Uh, and as far as sewer, uh, it's just to show that there's capacity, uh, and. Uh, to show that it's discharging to a place that can adequately handle, uh, that loading, so. Uh, that's standard and we'll just expect that at the construction permitting stage. And then the last one is just the stormwater pollution prevention plan. Uh, that permit will need to be obtained and then, uh, notice of intent NOI should be filed, uh, with Hideout prior to construction. So both of those are, uh, pretty routine and we don't anticipate them to cause any issues.
Well, thanks, thanks, you guys, thanks, Dylan, uh, for putting this together and and leading us through this a little bit. Um, does any, does anyone else on the commission want to review any of any other parts of this report? Um, at this point? Or have any questions?
I I do, um, I have a couple of questions about back to the plan, the the new revised plan. Um, the, uh, power line easement, is that the power, I'm new to this planning of this section of town. Uh, but the power line easement, is that, well, that large power line, is that the power line that we're talking about going between those homes? That large power line down there along the lake, along the Jordanale, is that the same power line?
Yes.
Okay, um, how do you think people feel about that? Living down there, will be our buildings on either side so close to that, I mean, is there? An issue, uh, people a little uncomfortable with it? I just was, was wondering because it's going right along the back of those homes. Like, I don't even know how far that, how wide that easement is, maybe forty feet?
Um, just a second, I can tell you the width of that easement is. The easement is forty five feet.
Okay.
It it is an existing power line, I mean, we don't, they don't give us a choice to bury that line because it's it is kind of a main line. And so we just are just working around it. I mean, we still meet all the criteria for safety on on it. But it is a big line and it may affect lot sales a little bit.
Right, I mean, that that was my second question to see if it can.
Yeah, they they're, they won't let us do it.
And we've developed all over the state and there's, I mean, inevitably you have a power line almost in every development you do, it seems like. Um, and yeah, I mean, it's not, it's definitely not ideal, it'd be great if they weren't there. I will say like in Deer Waters, we have a, we have that power line that, um, is right below our subdivision. And we still get pretty big lot premiums, uh, you know, I mean, it's not, you have unobstructed views of the lake, but you do have the power line right behind you. And it it definitely has not affected those cells.
Right, uh, well, do you know, uh, what is the, what is the safety criterion, Paul? Do you have that? I mean.
Um, I I just have to stay out of their easement as far as with construction, so. The the power line runs right down the middle of the easement and so they have, I mean, twenty feet on either side of that. So we have that twenty feet, then we have the rear yard setback at twenty feet, so we have forty feet to the power lines. But, yeah, it it would be nicer if it wasn't there.
And I know, like, people mentioned, oh, it's a shame they couldn't bury our power lines here, like, they didn't soar and talk. Um, you know, so I just was, it was, it was just, uh. Just inquiring about that because I think that would be really, would behoove the community too, but if it can't be done, it can't be done.
All all of the normal power lines are are buried through our subdivision, I mean, just your standard to house power.
Right, okay. All right, and the next question, down on the lower left where the parking lot spaces are. Um, and it and it goes, there's a road exiting that neighborhood, uh, says existing subdivision under construction. It's under the the pink and the the green. Um, layout, uh, lower left, it looks like, is that a pickleball court or something that is that? Yes?
Yes.
And what is the blue and the circles and and what is all that?
I mean, the the blue on each lot or I can't see it, somebody, maybe pull it down a little bit, let's see.
It's on the, uh.
Maybe I can turn it so that I don't have to turn my head.
I don't think it's that one, it's the page, page eleven, oh, well, this might be on here too, hold on. Yeah, page, it's page eleven of sixty two. And I just was curious to see what that was, nothing is, um, yeah, go up. Yep, here you go, so on this, on the right. It's just turned around.
I have no idea what that is, Paul.
It it's just trails and tables.
Tables and that's.
The circles represent trees.
Okay, maybe a trail in there or something, is that what that is? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, the the blue parallel lines are trails going around the, and I think it's a basketball. Thing now versus.
Is that a basketball court?
Well, it'll be, it'll, it'll still be a pick, it's a pickleball, basketball, uh, combined.
Okay. All right, all right.
One thing that we have on here that I I don't see it, but we we do have a a dog washing down where it says boundary line. We have, uh, we're we're doing a dog washing, uh, area. There's a lot of people, a lot of people come up from, you know, the, uh, trails around Jordanale and it it's muddy and so we we'll have, it'll be covered. And we've addressed it somewhere in here, I'm not sure where.
It's in there, I think it's right next to lot two thirteen, kind of right there at parcel C where it connects to the.
So the the hope is, I mean, we'll have, we'll have running water there, uh, a a a building. Kind of a canopy building and concrete pad. And people can, instead of getting, you know, in their cars with their dogs all muddy, they can come and wash them and. And so that'll be a dog washing area for for the community.
And and what is that, uh, what is the bordering, it says boundary down, uh, parcel C.
That's the government lands.
Oh, so that is, that's state park?
State park, yeah.
Okay, so that's the boundary land for the state park, okay.
Yeah.
The element to the left is. The road that goes to the left on that, I mean.
That that's the existing subdivision that we're connecting into.
Which is, is that Deer?
That's Deer Waters.
Deer Waters, okay, okay.
And then the road to the right, on the bottom right, that goes into the shoreline phase two, right?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, that's Shoreline Phase Two and the large road up top is Shoreline Drive. Or long, yeah.
Longview.
Longview?
It's becoming Shoreline.
It's becoming Shoreline.
Shoreline Drive, the one they just opened.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right, all right, now I've got my bearings, I appreciate that explanation. All right, I think I have, and you have, and of course, it's going to be fire hydrants every every certain amount of area.
Yes, yes, the the fire hydrants are scattered throughout the project. It's it's meant so that the fire department doesn't have to fall more than two hundred feet to any structure.
Okay, all right. All right, I think that's all I have to say.
Thank you for your questions.
I just a question about the the easement under the power lines. Is that, is any of that space usable for recreation? Can you put trail in there, or can we have green space for dog walking and whatnot?
Yes, our trail corridor, I mean, our trails actually do go through that corridor. So it'll be a paved trail under in that forty-five foot easement.
Okay.
Do we have a?
On this chart, can can we see the trails, which one, which one of the maps are, because I know that will probably come up.
The full plan set is, I think it's attached behind Thomas's report, which we're in right now. And then I put the plan set behind ours, so it's kind of deep. So it's behind the the conditions of approval that I read off of.
Yeah, so if you look at page six of the construction drawings, that shows the trail locations and the types.
Page six of the pack, no, page six of the construction.
Yeah, page six of the construction drawings.
Trying to get to the packet so I can help.
My, I'm page six of the construction drawings.
Yeah, you're just getting into.
Just getting into it, yeah.
Yeah, now I.
I think it, it might be page twenty-four of the packet, I think. If I, if my, if I'm looking at the right packet.
All right, there is a map. Yes, it's, it is on page twenty-four sixty-two.
There you go.
There's trails.
You you can kind of see it on that one right there, so that darker dashed line. Going through the, through the power corridor, that, those are the trails.
And that connects up with the open space on the south side or the right side of this map.
So, sorry, page twenty-seven is the best view for all the trails, it takes out a lot of the hatching.
Okay.
Is this one here?
No, they'll keep going, I think, one more.
Packet, there you go.
The trails are going in between homes?
And through the easement.
Through the.
There are some open, open areas where we are taking a trail through homes. So, for example, we are taking them between three seventeen, three eighteen. Which is a little bit up.
Right there.
Right here, right?
That's right, along the stormwater easement, and that goes up to the park that's up above, there you go, yeah.
Then there's a trail through the power line corridor. And it connects over by the dog wash and into Lakeside. Or Lakeview.
Oh, okay, oh, I see it, I see, okay, now I see what the trail, I I thought it was the darker, darker dotted.
That's the, so did I, when when they said that, that's the, that's the phase line. So that separates phase one, two, and three. But yeah, that that's the trail system now.
And it gets you into pickleball if you want to.
Will, but would there be any at the, at the park area? Will there be any structure there, like a gazebo for shade, or just there's going to be some big trees for shade?
Yeah, right now, I think it's just lands, we don't have any structures that I recall, Paul.
Correct, yeah, those circles are trees, and yeah, so no structures other than the pickleball basketball court.
Definitely go for the trees, because we need some in this town, that's for sure, some decent trees.
We went with the basketball court down here, because if you look at my phase three of Deer Springs, and maybe you can't see that, or Deer Waters, sorry. Right now, we have two pickleball courts up there, and so that's why we did something a little bit different down here. Right there, where it says playground, we we've added two pickleball courts to that area. And so we didn't, we didn't think the area would need three pickleball courts. So we have two, two here in Deer Deer Waters, phase three, for the for the community. And then down in the park, down below, we have the basketball. We'll also set up a little pickleball thing, but it won't be a legitimate court, it'll just be, you know.
Like a multi-use kind of thing?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Great, good, good descrip, good description of where this is all going, at least recreationally as well, thanks.
Yeah, and I'll say, you know, I'll say one thing, we, as a developer in this area, we strongly believe in the trail system. And hopefully you've seen what we've done in the in the past with, you know, connecting Deer Springs with Deer Waters. And and we still have a lot of trails to build, but they're the last thing you build, because you don't want them to get ruined. And so, um, yeah, we we just think the trail systems are just great for this area.
I'll echo that, um, you know, since I'm back here on a permanent basis, I mean, I use them every day. And I think they're probably like the the rest of us, that's a good chunk of our exercise these days. Given I can't go to the gym, and I can't go to the mark, or I can't go to basin wreck or something, can't be inside. So we're living on our trails, whether it's on a bike, whether it's walking, whether it's with our dogs. So these, those are some of the most valuable pieces of our area here, you know, and then connecting with the with the Jordanale. So the better they are, the better, you know, I think the more you you'll get appreciated, so to speak, for for what you're trying to accomplish here.
Yeah, agree, we a hundred percent agree.
And will those trails connect to the Jordanale State Park?
We're still negotiating that with the state park, but yeah, the hope is, we're going to have two places, one in Deer Waters and one in Lakeview that connects with the state park trails. And we also have one in Deer Springs that we're working on, I don't know if you know where Deer Springs is, it's on the other side of town, that that'll also connect. So our hope with just the subdivisions that I have is you can get from Lakeview on a trail all the way to the Jordanale Parkway, which takes you to Deer Valley, or we'll have a bottom trail going through Deer Springs, which will take you into the Richardson Flats area, which will take you into downtown Park City. So within the next three or four years, probably three years, we'll we'll have a ten-foot trail going all the way through that you can get into Park City or Deer Valley, just on our trail system.
Okay.
We'll connect them with the existing trail system.
Okay, well, that's, that's excellent, excellent, I've had requests made.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, Nate, that brings up an interesting question, just kind of thinking ahead about how the how the state park may look at trail connectivity. One of the things they have mentioned to us in the past is, if they allow for trail connections, it may have to be such that where it crosses over into the town, there needs to be a little, it may be a city or a town, public area, publicly owned, or a public easement. Would you consider working with the town on that if there needed to be a ten-by-ten landing pad, for example? Okay, because that'd probably be down near the dog wash, where we might need to either own that land or have an easement on that land, so that it's considered public land, so they allow that access.
The biggest concern now is that we've run into, and we're negotiating with these, with the parks, is that they don't know how to charge. Because there's a charge every month right now, I I don't know if you can buy a year pass or not, but I think it's a monthly charge. And so they're not sure if they should charge our HOA, if it should be something through the town. But you know, if the entire town did it, we could, everyone could, we could save a tremendous amount of money ba- based on the entire entire town putting it together. That's what we're negotiating now, is how to actually get things paid for, so that we can have permanent access all the time to these trails.
That's right. That would be a positive step forward as well, you know, although the the pass is not that expensive. But you you'd have to get the pass, sometimes they don't mail it to you in time, you know, so.
Because they don't want, they don't want. Yeah, they don't want to have it open up to our subdivision, where everyone can go into without buying the pass, so that's what we're working on now.
Any, any other comments, because we still have to open this up to public. But any, any other commissioner questions, we we covered a lot, a lot at this point. But any, any other key items that we want to look at before we open it up to the public?
Mr. Chairman, could I just throw in a few items in our report that we've already discussed with Paul and Nate in terms of recommended conditions of approval, just prior to construction permits, just to make sure that we're all on the same page?
Of course.
So, um, just real quickly, we've already discussed them. But just, uh, looking forward to, um, prior to construction permits, working with the applicant on a final landscape plan, treat areas at the entrance, et cetera, where there may be some need for additional landscaping, the park, et cetera. Two was, and Nate and or, uh, Paul, don't hesitate to jump in if there's something that I'm throwing out that may be new to you. Number two, um, just final design and engineering of the stacked rock retaining wall, just exactly what that will look like in the three primary locations. Third one was, oh, I think we we've, this was a question, the open space amenities are being proposed, the basketball, the half basketball court, et cetera, are being proposed at the start of phase two, just to work with them on final design and amenities in that, as well as the trail connection between three, lot three seventeen and three eighteen, up to the existing park. Final design of the dog wash station kind of layout of that, design and materials. I think we're looking now at a paved trail under the, um, power line, instead of maybe crushed granite. But we will, we'll work together on that. And the the trail pad to the state park that I just outlined, to work with them, whether that needs to be either maybe a town ownership or an easement. And then the last one was a question and or something we would ask to work with them on, and that is the stormwater basin, is there fencing located around that, or is it just kind of landscaped at the top of the berm?
It's just lands, it's just, um, just natural grass.
Okay, that's perfect.
Yeah, so no fencing, um, natural grass, something that doesn't take irrigation.
And those were the only conditions, and again, we've discussed them with them pretty straightforward and pretty typical for our developments.
Thank you.
So Thomas, do you have everything you need, or are you waiting for those?
There, there's a, a few of those we'll need to finalize, but most of these are, um, conditions prior to construction permits, not prior to plat. So we would recommend approval, those are just some details prior to construction permit. So in terms of plating, um, I think that we are, we recommend approval, we are fine to move forward with that.
Our conditions are in the same category of before construction.
Okay, thanks, Dylan, that those are, that's good feedback. So we know where we're going here, and is, so, so, uh, any, any other comments before, again, we try to open this up to public comment?
I'm good.
Okay, well, if not, then would somebody offer, would somebody like to offer a motion to open it up to the public?
I'll make the motion, open it to the public.
Thank you, Tony, any seconds?
I will.
Okay, and Bruce, um, so let's have a vote. But I don't think we probably even need a vote, we have two, and it's just opening up to the public, correct me if I'm wrong, Polly, on that.
You actually don't even need to do a vote to open it, you can, as chair, can just decide to, that it's time to open it for a public hearing.
Well, we've been so nice in the past, I thought we would continue our. All right, terrific, well, okay, let's open it up to the public, and to this point, uh, I I'm not sure if we can see who's raising their hand. So we have to go back to the, to the Zoom window here. And understand who is going to raise their hand, there's two ways to raise your hand. If you're on the phone, it's a star nine, um, to raise your hand, and a star six to unmute. And if you're, um, coming through the Zoom channel, then it is the hand icon as well, and then that will be recognized, hey, John Hopkins, are you still on? Um, and we can, we can walk through this a little bit.
And it should be made clear too, of course, that any public comment should only be as to this item, not pertain to anything else on the agenda.
Yeah, good point, Polly, thanks, yeah, so, um, I I just remind the public that we're only talking about this Lakeview Estates development and what we have in it at hand. So any comments, concerns, issues, or thoughts, questions, that's what we're talking about now, only on Lakeview. And, uh, so anyway, are there, are there any comments at this point? And if you do, if you do jump on, please state your full name. And clearly, as as best as possible, so we can hear you, and where you live. Are there any, are there any folks trying to get in, John?
Mr. Chairman, I think if you kind of hover over your screen and you, uh, click on participants, you'll see them lined up on the right. And I think when they raise their hand, it kind of moves them to the top, I think there are a couple that have their hands up.
Yeah, it looks like that, and I'm not sure I have the control on this, so, um, we were going over this before. Let's see, I saw, I saw Terry's name come up.
I've got a, I've got a. I've got a phone number unmuted.
Hello?
Yeah, so who's, uh, so is this someone on the line, on the phone, is that correct?
Is it, uh, can you hear me, this is Carol Tomas?
We can hear you, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, well, you're unmuted, um, Carol, where do you, where do you reside?
I currently reside in, in Salt Lake City, however, I am going to be residing in the Deer Waters Development. And I have a couple of questions regarding a boundary or a plat map change that was made, uh, adjacent to line one, uh, parcel one oh four. And this is where the Deer Waters parcel appeared to have a straight line across it. And now there's been something carved out, and I'm just wondering, what, what is that? And you can find this on page forty, well, it's on page twenty-seven of the plat map. And it looks like a boundary lane, boundary change.
Pretty well on this map, if you go to the left of your screen, you can see lot one oh four there, and I can certainly. I could certainly let Dylan or Ryan speak to this, but I think that that was a hammerhead dead-end street, and as we work with Nate on the new development, that street now goes through. And so I think there was an additional unit or lot added to that development, but.
I could speak to it if you'd like. So it's paved, uh, right now as the hammerhead that's in the light gray linework. But that's where one of the necessary connections will be. So what you see is just a change in linework, where it's the same owner of the different, um, parcels here, the both, both developments are under the same owner, Nate Brockbank. So that is within the Deer Waters Phase One, I, plat, and I'm not sure if that's where you live. But, uh, what they have drawn there is adding a, a unit there around that corner. And, uh, I'd have to bounce back to Thomas as far as how that would work off of an MDA. But that would require a plow amendment for Deer Waters Phase, uh, one. But it's, it's town favorable, because it makes the connection to Lakeview Estates and, uh, furthers connection to the town.
Well, I I agree, I I agree that that definitely is, makes the, um, Lakeview Estates more accessible and an access road. But we could probably use more parking in Deer Waters, rather than, I don't know what's going to be there. But that would be, I mean, if you've ever been to Deer Waters, and I know this isn't about Deer Waters, those parking spaces, all of the parking spaces are full. And we probably have, what, less than one percent of the building completed? And the open, and the available off-street parking is full. So I would propose that maybe that be reconsidered, in addition. the trail is going to be moved and we're talking about trail access. And if you look at page 42, it shows that the, that's not page 42, that the trail is going to be moved. Where's the trail going to be moved to if whatever is going to be there is put in? So that section of trail is, it says trail removed, removed to where?
Are we showing this on the map here, Terry?
Where the new lot line is, Ralph?
And I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, could I just jump in real quickly? Ryan got muted. I, I wonder if John Hopkins could unmute him. He, he may have some input on this as well. And maybe Nate or Paul have information with regard to trail location, relocation.
Yeah, yes. And so the trail is going to be relocated right behind lot 225. So it'll pull further down into the dog wash area.
Well, no, I'm not, I'm not talking about the proposed trail to 225. If you look to adjacent trail and you go north, or actually it would be east, it goes right into whatever that square is, and it says remove trail. Well, where's the trail going to go? So the people in Deer Waters have access to the proposed trail in Lakeview and down to the Dogwash.
Yes, that just, this is Nate Brockbank. That trail will go around between lot 104 and that building. So because this isn't, this isn't a Deer Waters map, we're not showing it on the, on the map.
But that, no, I've also noticed, I, I've also noticed that it doesn't show on the Deer Waters, anyway, this isn't about Deer Waters. All right, so my next question, so that's a concern there is how, what is that?
So could, could I add a little point of clarification? Nate, you're proposing right now, that's not that lot as proposed that covers the trail where it says remove trail. That is part of Deer Waters, but that plat hasn't been approved. Is that correct?
No, it's approved and recorded.
For that, for that lot to be located there?
But not that new lot.
The, the, the plot includes the new lot, but it's conditioned upon the road, no longer needing the hammerhead.
Yeah, but that is, that is.
And has that been approved by the town council, that additional lot?
Yes.
And what, what town council meeting was that approved at? Was that, was there a public hearing on that?
I'm sure there was, I don't know the dates.
Well, I've looked back through the meetings through on March 19th and on May 28th, and I don't see anything about them. So I'd just like some further clarification on that.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I don't want to speak out of turn, but as that, I believe it constitutes an amendment to Deer Waters Phase One, I think that that amendment, amended plat would need reviewed.
We, it already happened. We, we went through that process. I don't remember what meeting or meetings it was at, but we, we went through that process. And there's conditions on the plot about when that becomes a lot based on when that road goes through.
It's probably been three, three or so months ago.
Yeah, and Ryan, when that was approved, help me remember that the, the adjacent property trail would then go between that new lot proposed and then Lakeview Lot 104 and kind of around the back of parcel A and connect, so there's still full connectivity.
Correct. Yeah.
And is there someplace where I can get a copy of that amended plat?
Yeah, I, I just looked it up. It's recorded and you can look for it on the county recorder website.
Oh, is there a specific parcel number that I need to go to on the county recorder site?
It's, if you want to write this down, it's
I will.
482301.
And that was approved by, by the town council?
Yes, it's recorded date August 6th.
No, no, I didn't ask if it was recorded. I asked, was it approved by the town council to make that change in the Deer Waters plat?
It would have to be approved by the council before it could be recorded. It wouldn't be.
And was there a public hearing on it?
By law, there would have had to have been, so I wasn't there, but if one of the staff members who was there could comment on that.
And that staff member would be?
I, I'll be happy to go back to the minutes and try to find it. I, I don't remember what month we, we did, we did stuff. It was part of a, and Nate, maybe you'll remember or can, can find it faster. But it was part of when we were looking at the, the other Deer Waters plot amendments because it was part of, we took away density in other places. And that was one of the conditions we, we added this lot and took away some other condition, other, other density. And we did it all about the same time. It was early in the year, I want to say like February or March.
Yeah, I want to say it's three or four months ago.
Okay, well, maybe what I'll do is instead of taking everyone's time right now, someone at the town council can get back to me, I'll call tomorrow and I'll, I'll get more information on this. Does that sound reasonable?
Yes.
You know, any of this information should be public, so.
Right, well, I, I couldn't, I've looked online and I've looked through all the minutes and I can't find anything about that plat map change or the removal of the trail. So just curious about that. And then, so that's my first question. And my second question is, so we're going to, there's going to be trails through the power line easement. Is that part of, considered part of the 20% open space? Or is that just bonus open space?
It is part of the open space calculations.
But it's a power line easement and you couldn't build on it anyway. So shouldn't there be more open space provided by the development?
Well, the, the development has 30% open space, a little bit north of that.
Okay, so the, so the 20% open space is net.
Yes.
Okay. Very good. And then that is just about all I have.
Okay, well, thank you, Terry. And I hope you get your information that you want on, on the 104 area. And so.
Oh, wait, I do have a, I do, I do have a, one more question. So I noticed that these are all single family dwellings. Is that correct?
Yes.
So why is it that the, you've got your residential minimum density for this is zoned as residential minimum density? And that calls for a maximum lot, building height of three and a half stories or 42 feet when your, when your zoning plan says that single family residences have a maximum height of 35 feet or two and a half stories. And this can be found on page one of the integrated planning and design report. So what is the maximum height within the, within the Lakeview Estates?
Well, from, from, from my knowledge, Terry, there were.
My name is, pardon me, my name is Carol.
I'm sorry, Carol. My bad. He said, so hey, Carol, so, so we've had, we've had two titles, two titles addressing zoning heights, setbacks, et cetera. One was we inherited it from the early administrations of the town. And that's 42 feet, three and a half stories is, is the height with, you know, obviously setback. So we didn't change to 35 until the latest title, which this did not fall under. So is that your question or, you know, maybe?
I guess my, so my, my final question is, what is the height maximum within the Lakeview Estates according to the current zoning?
Well, according to the zoning that they were, that, that this division came under, it's 42 feet, three and a half stories.
Okay, I think that should be amended because clearly we don't want to have three and a half story houses along the lakefront there. And that will surely, if anyone says, oh, okay, I want to build a three and a half story house, that will definitely hamper the view of any of the lots behind them.
Couldn't agree more. That's why we changed it.
So is it changed?
It's not retroactive. It's not retroactive to the, to, to anyone that's previously, you know, performed a subdivision or applied. Once you get past the application, you fall under the, you fall under the regulations or the, the zoning code, so to speak, at that point in time. As opposed to, you know, you could pass something new and then, you know, but you, you, you filed under a previous zoning ordinance. So that's the issue. We didn't, you know, that's why we changed a lot of this in the new zoning, but that only takes precedence into, you know, a new subdivision and new application.
So is it, so is it possible that all of the houses within the Lakeview Estates could in fact be three and a half stories?
As far as I know. And as well as any of the subdivisions that were approved during the prior titles, the, the four titles that we, that the town operates under. So it's.
And how does the town, and how does the town council feel about that?
In terms of, I'm not sure how I, I could answer that question. I can tell you how I feel about it. And, and that's why we made a lot of changes in a positive way to, Carol, to enlarge the setbacks from 10 to 20 feet on each side because of the encroachments of the homes. But the reduct, the, the reduced views that, that the current landowners, if they do build or under, it's, you know, but we're, we're dealing with something that we, we tried to change currently and we can't change retroactively.
So what, at what time will the proposed structures or designs be available for the homes that are, that will be built on, on these lots? When will those be available?
Most of the town, I'm sorry to say, has been, was pre-approved. I think there's only one more subdivision left to be built. And that they, but that falls under the prior or the, yeah, the, the prior zoning titles. So only something new that we potentially even like, we're talking annexation next, and I'm not going to get into that, that would fall into the new zoning codes. So sorry to say that, you know, all those, all the subdivisions got their approvals way before we ever got on the board or, or this current town's council is, is managing them.
I can tell you, we have, we'll, we'll have one builder in this, in this development. The last thing I want to do is take away people's views. We will, I don't think we have any homes over 35 feet. In fact, I would imagine those homes 204 through 213 are all single family, so you don't block the views. I don't think there's one home over 35 feet.
And what about the ones on 225 and 224?
Well, I mean, the homes haven't been planned yet, obviously. We're, we're still at final plat approval. We haven't designed every home, but I can tell you, we will not have a home over 35 feet.
Can I get that, can I get that in writing? Or can we get, or can we get this amended so that you're a, a, a single family residence and not an RMD? The height limit is a huge concern.
Where, where are you buying, you're buying in Deer Waters?
Yes.
And where at?
I'm at the end of the road.
You're at the end of the road where the cul-de-sac was?
Yes.
Okay, why don't you just take down my email? It's natebrockbank@gmail. And I'll make sure that we get with Homes Homes, who, who's building your house and will build on lot 224 and 225, and we'll work out something with you to make sure that you're, you're not blocked there, obviously.
That would be great.
So my number, it's just natebrockbank@gmail. Send me an email tonight and let's schedule some appointment with the Homes Group on Monday or Tuesday. And we'll make sure that, yeah, we, I mean, we, you're there before, you're, you're there before this subdivision. So the last thing we want to do is obstruct your view.
I think that's, I think that's an appropriate thing to do.
Yeah, 100%, I mean, 100%. So send me that email, natebrockbank@gmail.com. And let's get together Tuesday or Monday or Tuesday, whatever works for you. And we'll make sure that the home designed on 224 or 225 does not obstruct your view.
Okay, that sounds good to me.
Perfect.
And I don't think I, I, I don't think I had any other concerns. I was concerned about the retaining laws, but that has been addressed. I was also concerned about the open space, but that seems to be all right. So I think that is all I have.
Well, no, hey, I just want to thank you for the comments. Obviously you're moving in there and this is a surprise to you at this time. So we, we will, we will make sure that you are happy. So if you, just send me, send me, send me an email and I'll, I'll call you tomorrow. I'm going to schedule an appointment.
Okay. All right, thank you, City Council, for your time and consideration. And thank you, Nate.
Hey, thank you.
We're the planning commission, Carol.
Oh, sorry, okay, planning commission. I know it has to go to the city council.
Yeah, we, we're just the recommend, we're the recommending body. I don't want to say just, we're the recommending body. We, we do a lot of listening and questioning. So I, I think all your comments are really good. And Nate, by the way, I, I wish, I, I wish I knew you before I bought, so to speak. If you're, if you're that, you know, liberal, so to, but, but that's really, you know, Carol, you know, your question, I must get a call from different people every day, like, what happened to my view? Where did it go? And why did it go, you know, why did it evaporate or did someone promise me something that I didn't get? So I hear you. And, but we are dealing with some past issues as well. Good luck.
All right, well, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, so we do have, it looks like we have a hand here from, from the Terry I was looking at. And that's the only other person. So can we unmute this?
Yes, thank you. This is Larry and Terry Eisenfeldt and here in Deer Waters. And we're two houses over from the removed trail marker that Carol was just talking about. And I was at a planning commission meeting last year and I asked the question about burying the power lines. And I was told that that could be done if the homeowners wanted to, that Hydat had been given an estimate of $10 million for the cost of burying the power lines. So I was just curious if, if it is true that they cannot be buried or is just not cost effective?
And it's Larry and Terry. Hey, this is Ralph speaking. I don't have an answer for that, but I'm, I'm in the same boat that you are. I don't know, when, when, when my wife and I walk around, we're always saying, why didn't we bury the, or why didn't the, when, I'm not going to get into the original developer. You know, why didn't they bury these like they did in, in Touhey? And I think that was a bad, very bad decision and was about money. And, you know, it comes back to bite you in the, in these situations. I don't know, I mean, $10 million is. We're getting some feedback from you, so if you could just mute yourself on your, on your phone or whatever. So I, you know, that would be a, that would be a, a, something that we, the town would have to pick up. Sorry, you're going to have to, you're going to have to go, go on mute on yourself. I'm going to have to mute you here. We're getting a lot of, ton of feedback. Where are you in this? Okay, I, I'm not sure we answered your question because we had so much static on there. Um, with that, I'm going to, I'm going to move on. And are there any, can we, can whoever that is, and maybe, I think we need to mute you here. And I'm just not finding which participant is, needs to be muted. Okay, it sounds like we're, we're in a better zone here. Are there any other public questions or comments? Once, twice, three times, you're, you're finished. So let's move, let, let's close public, public comments at this point. Go back to our session or, and start sharing comments amongst experts here on, on, you know, that are participating. experts here on, on, you know, that are participating and the commissioners. So are there any other internal comments, call it from Thomas or Ryan or Dylan? Or even Polly at this point, you know, that we should be aware of based upon the comments that we just heard or anything else?
Excuse me, Ralph. I believe it was addressed in reference to my comment already about the power lines not being able to be buried. Is that correct? I believe that Paul had, had chimed in because I had that concern. And he said that those power lines were not able to be buried of that magnitude.
And that's what I've been told also from Rocky Mountain Power. The other lines that are a lower voltage are able to be buried, but the higher ones are not.
So I just wanted to make sure that Terry and Larry Eisenfeld's question was answered.
Okay, that's great. That's good, good input. So it's just the, the high, the high voltage lines can't be, can't be buried. Which, they're, they're the big lines. Yeah. So with that, any, any other comments from the commissioners or anyone else?
No, I think you've, they've done a great job working with Thomas and Ryan and the company. And Nate, this looks a lot better than it did the last time we looked at it.
Thank you. I agree. Everyone was great to work with there. Took a lot of work to get to this point, but it's a much better project.
I would, I would, I would agree. Well, given that, if there's no more, if there's no other comments from the commission, we're in a, we're in a situation where we, we want to take a rec, a vote to recommend or not recommend. So does anyone offer? Does anyone offer a motion to move this to recommend?
I'll move to recommend, given the several stipulations that we've gone through, but still have to be met. You know, from engineering and from Thomas.
Anyone, and I agree with those same thoughts, but, but any second on this motion?
I will.
Okay, Donna. So we have, we have, we have a second. Tony? Your vote?
He's muted.
Oh, boy. John Hopkins, unmute Tony. Bruce, your vote?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Tony, you back on?
So, there we go. Yes.
Yeah, you probably have, hey, Tony, you probably have your cell phone on going at the same time as your internet. Mute one of them. Perfect. I heard three yeses. I'll vote yes. So in that case, the motion carries. So Nate, thank you for all the, you know, the work you've done to modify this. I think a lot of improvements and all the, I guess, input that you've taken, you've taken to heart, made the appropriate changes. So motion passes with the, all the, with all Ryan and Dylan's recommendations as well as dependent upon Thomas's input as well.
Great. Well, hey, thank you very much. I just want to say one more thing. That it does say remove trail on there, but that trail will be, it, it'll, it'll just be moved, not removed. So I'll get, I think her name was Carol. I'll get with Carol and make sure she's happy with that. So I just wanted to say that, make sure that that was, okay.
I'll change my plan.
Thank you.
Fantastic. So I think we're complete with that on the agenda. And we, we have one more item. And now we'll stay in a kind of a workshop mode, I guess, at this point. And talk about the possible or potential annexation for the master development for, for the Richardson Flat area. So Nate, so actually I'm, maybe we can take a two minute break because I, I want to get Jerry on the line here. He said he would join in. So maybe this is a, Polly, do you have any problems with us taking a two minute breather here?
No, I would appreciate it as well.
All right. So everybody on the line, if you want to stay on the line, go grab your favorite drink and we'll come back in two minutes. And then I'll have a chance to connect with Jerry as well to add him into the meeting. Don't mute yourselves though. Just use your hard, your hard mute. Hey, John Hopkins, if you're still on the line, can you unmute Jerry Dwinell? And make him, give him access to the meeting? He just tuned in here somewhere. I just, yeah, there you go. Hey, Jerry.
Hey.
We're just taking, we're taking a two minute, we were taking a two minute break to add you and take a two minute in, in between from where we were on Lakeview and then segueing over to the annexation conversation.
Okay. And who is John Hopkins?
John is Kathleen's husband, who's been helping out here, doing some of the mutes and unmutes. So we have, we have multiple cooperation going on across a couple of dimensions. Well, she's taking notes. John's kind of just navigating people. So as, as we've seen in the past, if you inadvertently mute, you know, on the, on the Zoom side, you know, then you're lost and somebody's got to get you back on. And John's been doing some of that and unmuting the right folks. But I think we're all on, we're all unmuted here from what I can see. I mean, all the, the folks back on the, on the.
And I see something that says live on YouTube. Are we streaming?
Yeah, we're also testing streaming tonight. We're going to try that a couple of times, Jerry. So yet, yet a new one. Yeah. Where we'll give it a shot. And, and I think that would extend us into using YouTube at a lower price and extend the number of people that could get on. And, and so there's some trial benefits that Lisa, Alicia and Kathleen were talking to me about previous to this meeting. So it won't affect anything on the meeting.
Ralph, before we start, this is Nate again. Do you have the, do you have a plan or?
I was going to say, Nate, I got, I think Jerry sent the map, the kind of picture map here. So why don't we go to that for a second?
I didn't send anything.
I sent it to Alicia this morning.
I, I have a copy. Do you want me to email?
That's it?
There you go. Okay.
Okay, fantastic. That's the last one. Last thing I think I got here today. Let me try to move our icons and pictures around a little bit. So you want to start from this, Nate?
Yeah, just whenever, well, whenever you're ready, I'll just. Jerry, do you want to say a few words or do you want me to jump right into it?
Um, so.
Yeah, Jerry, I would say you could start and, and then maybe we can get any comments from Thomas High Level and, and, and or Ryan, and Ryan. And, and maybe Polly wants to say something as well. So.
All right. Maybe you could scroll up a bit on this map so we can talk to it a bit. And you let me know then when you're ready for me to go.
I can shrink this down, Jerry.
That's good.
And Nate, is this, is this better here? Because I think, yeah, this is kind of where we're focused on, right?
Yes.
So Jerry, I'd say give us the high level from your view because you've been, you know, you've, you've been on planning board, you've been on the council. Give us your, you know, your view of things and then we'll just get some of the other experts in here.
Okay. All right. So the town council last Thursday voted to proceed with an intent to annex approximately 350 acres in the Richardson Flats area. This is significantly less than the, the last attempt. It was close to 650 acres. So there are parcels that have been left off of this one. But you'll see there's some not annexing portions here that were discussed as part of the, the last attempt. So this is a much more scaled down version of what the last attempt was. The idea here is that the legislature left a 60 day window open where the law is still effective. And the council voted to at least take steps forward. We may ultimately not pass an annexation. But the first step in it is to do some exploratory, make the, the intent announcement. And then that starts the rest of the work that we have to do to see if this is something that we want to move forward with or not. So as I understand it, Nate will talk more about it. You know, we've, we've always talked about, there's really three things that are driving the desire to annex. The first is services or amenities. So right now we have to, the all of us along the Jordanell Corridor, 248 corridor, either travel into Park City via Kearns or over to Campbell Junction for simple necessities like groceries and gas. The other option is to Camus, but I don't, I don't know too many people that are making that trip. The food town there is a little pricey and there's not a whole lot of selection there. So I think most people are going to Smith's or the market or possibly Whole Foods. But we have no services close to us. So we are driving traffic into the areas that are most congested within the Park City area. So the number one intent here is for amenities such as grocery, gas, dining options, that sort of thing. So there's some commercial space that has been set aside in this. The second is for schools. Right now, all of our kids in town are being bused over an hour to Midway Heber area down in the valley. And there is nothing up here for them elementary school wise. So that's another big driver of this is to be able to have some space dedicated for a potential school that the children of HIDEOT can attend without having to be bused over an hour. And then, of course, the third element here is that as any community grows, you know, we are a relatively young town, approximately 12 years old. We have a lot of building that's going on in town. So building permits is the primary revenue source today. Now, as time moves on, building permits turn into buildings to generate property tax revenue. So property tax revenue begins to take over from building permits as time moves on. But a bedroom community that, that is a, a town that only has residential is going to struggle in the future because that's not enough revenue to sustain a town long term. So commercial, generating some point of sales tax revenue is an important aspect for any town to be able to maintain its future viability by generating another source of revenue. So those are sort of the three broad scope desires that the council has in looking at this particular annexation. As most of you know, there is very little in town that has not already been approved. And assuming that, you know, if you approved Lakeview tonight, there's, you know, there's, there's only one parcel to my knowledge that hasn't been spoken for in town. Everything else has already been approved. To that, we also have some topographical challenges. Some of the terrain is, is difficult. There's not a lot of flat space in town. So the Richardson Flats area, hence by its name, lends itself to some of what we're looking for here as well. So those are sort of the, the arching things that the council is looking at. Now, of course, the, the council's overriding desire here is that this is a, a good thing for the town financially as well as providing and meeting goals that were laid out first in our master, in our general plan rather, that was approved in 2018, I believe it was. So, you know, this moves us forward in that direction. So I, I'm happy to entertain some questions before Nate talks about the development as he sees it.
Jerry, I, I, I've got a couple of questions. One, is any of this land in Wasatch or is it all in Summit?
It is all in Summit. Now, there is some, you know, the, the law allows, you know, it has to connect to us. So there are two ways that it connects. One is along 248 and the other is along Richardson Flats. And I'll let Nate speak more to that. And Polly, if she desires as well, the law allows public land to be annexed as well. So there's an annexation that's contemplated along 248 and up the Richardson Flats Road there that connects it to, to HIDEOT today. But everything you're seeing on the map right now is Summit County in color.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I thought the idea was great. I thought it was going to be a win-win for Park City and, and, and us. But I'll reserve, I mean, so I wish you could go forward. The fact that the legislator is, legislation, legislator have changed their opinion on it. It's a real downer. I don't know how we can move forward, but I'll let you folks explain more.
Yeah. So I'll speak to that as well as something else that I neglected to say. So there's a lot of green space on here that says not annexing. So these are parcels that, that Summit County had a dispute with, that the developer already owns. So while we are not looking to annex those parcels in, the developer is planning to. There's some deed restrictions on that property that prevents any large scale development, but does allow parks and trails and that sort of stuff. So the developer, I believe, is still planning to put parks and trails in that green space until such a time as whatever legal hurdles may or may not be ultimately solved that would allow something else to occur in those, in those places. So let me talk to the idea of legislative intent, because I think that's been crucial to how this has moved forward as it has. So last Tuesday, the. as it has. So last Tuesday, the town council held a meeting on this. At that meeting, we had a state senator and a state representative from our area speak at that meeting. Those are the only two folks in the legislation or legislature that voted against the original bill in both bodies. So their take on it was that the 60 day window was not left open for any purpose other than it was just left open. The legisla, the, the law requires a two thirds majority to make a bill effective immediately, and that would include the repeal. They chose not to do that. And those legislators claimed that there was no intent to leave a window open for, for anybody that had something in process to continue that process. They couldn't imagine that anyone would want to move forward. Since that call, several of us on the council received phone calls from other legislators, both from the state senate and from the house. And we got a different view that was expressed to us and that there was no intent to disadvantage either the county or the municipality. And that's why the 60 day window was left open, because if, had they closed it immediately, that would have advantaged the county. So, and there was more that they had to say on that as well. So there was a feeling on the majority of the council that we are still within a legal window to proceed. Again, as I, as I indicated earlier, we still may not ultimately vote to annex this in, but it's at least worth exploring. You know, we had a lot of questions that weren't allowed to be answered based on the, the first attempt we did to this because of the temporary restraining order, then ultimately the injunction. So we weren't able to ask some of the questions that we need answers for before making a decision. So this 30 days from last Thursday gives us that opportunity to try to answer as many questions as we can. And I think the idea for tonight is to begin the process of developing a, an MDA or, or master development agreement for the area that helps answer those questions. That tonight we want to look at what kinds of things would you want to see in the master development agreement to make sure that the town is protected. So, you know, some things that we've talked about, things like, you know, we know that this is in proximity to an EPA site. So we want to make sure that the town doesn't bear any financial responsibility for any cleanup operations that might occur on this annexed land today or in the future. We'd also want to do things like require some monitoring and regular testing to make sure that, you know, we were not dealing with contaminated lands within the annexed portion, you know, as dirt is disturbed, you know, testing to make sure that we haven't uncovered something. So those kinds of things from an EPA standpoint or, you know, contamination standpoint, dark sky sorts of concepts, you know, we want to make sure that we don't light up the sky. You know, Hideout is a dark sky positive place. So we want to make sure we, we deal with that as well. And then one other thing, and there may be more that you guys want to see as well, and that has to do with our intent for this, you know, our intent is commercial. So we want, and, and parks and trails, that kind of stuff. So we want to weigh those things from a priority standpoint earlier than any residential development that happens. So there's a balance there, you know, the, the developer likely needs some residential to help pay for things, but you know, our priority is on the commercial side. So we want to be, be able to agree upon a strategy to go forward to say, you know, in some way, sort of a performance metric that says, you know, once we have this, this much commercial, for example, then we, we approve this much residential or, you know, something that we can work out that makes sure that, you know, 10 years from now, we're not sitting with residential and no commercial. Now, I don't believe that, you know, Nate would do that, but we need to protect the town to make sure that kind of thing wouldn't occur. So those are some of the things that, you know, I, I'd ask you to think about. And you guys are creative folks as well. You can think of other things that we want to make sure that we discuss being placed within an MDA to make sure the town is protected if we do choose to move forward on this.
I would say thanks, Jerry. Do you have any additional comments? Because we're probably going to have a lot to think about. But, you know, again, I just want to remind everybody here, the purpose for tonight is to probably listen to Jerry and some of the experts and then Nate and Paul give, give their input on this. Because we're probably going to have at least a couple of meetings to digest, come up with good questions, come up with our concerns and come up with some ideas for positive, you know, something going in here, positive like I think Jerry was just saying. So that's, that's my take on it right now. And I, I don't even want to give an opinion. I just want to stay, you know, kind of, you know, consuming of information here so that we can, you know, make some, we can make some recommendations as we go along, but based upon good information. So that's my point of view anyway. But I, so Jerry, do you have anything, anything else? Just be part of the conversation here, I think, because I think we should turn to here is at least turn this over to Thomas and maybe even give Ryan a chance and Polly a chance at least. Polly, do we have anything legal that we have to be concerned about as a planning commission at this point in terms of how we discuss this at this point? So maybe you can give us any advice or guidance from your standpoint to begin with.
No, I think from, you know, from a legal standpoint right now, it's very high level. But if the annexation does, if the council does choose to go forward with the annexation, the AMDA, Annexation Master Development Agreement is really important to what the annexation will look like in terms of usage and zoning and other items that could be important to the town. So it is a very important process to go through and your recommendation on this is very helpful to the council. So nothing is a done deal, but it's important to do this work so that if the annexation does go through, that you have the, you know, you've thought this through.
Polly, who, who writes the AMDA at this point? Who's, is it a co-written document between the town and the developer? How does that, I, I haven't gone through, I've gone through one annexation before, but not, and I just don't remember it. It's been a few years. How, how does this process work a little bit?
Generally, I mean, obviously your recommendation would make a big impact, but from a legal standpoint, a lot of the legal language is negotiated between myself and the developers attorneys. And ultimately, yes, it's worked on together, but ultimately I would say you have kind of the ultimate say if there's something that, you know, you say, well, we won't accept this, that we won't go forward with this annexation agreement or this AMDA without conditions X, Y, and Z. That's going to have a big impact.
Yeah. So, so this would be a short period of time where we've got to do some, a bunch of iterations, listening and feedback in this process, it sounds like.
Yeah.
And the council will be looking for the planning commission's thoughts on this as well and how you think, you know, planning commission along with our, our planner, Thomas, to come up with, you know, what Nate will ultimately present is his vision of this. That may not be a vision that is shared by the planner and the planning commission. So we, we definitely interested in how the planning commission would see this land use.
Yeah, makes sense. Polly, anything else from a, from a legal or process standpoint that we should kind of not step into or be aware of?
No, I think you're, I think there's nothing right now. If there's something that scares me, I'll jump in and feel free to ask questions throughout the process.
I, I would say maybe Thomas, because you are the planner, could we get some high level from you? Have you, I, I think you've been involved in, in this. So could you give us just your high level and then maybe anything from Ryan, then we turn this over, give, give Nate some adage with time to present his view of the world?
Sure. So thanks, Mr. Chairman. I'll be, I'll be really quick and brief. So, you know, I was able to get a copy of this today as well to kind of get an understanding of which parcels are included within the proposed annexation, how it's shrunk down to about 350 acres now. And I think what I would say is, you know, just an initial kind of high level look at this. I'll, I'll let Nate walk through kind of what he's proposed at this point with the red kind of being the town center. It looks like, I think, the orange is the residential component. We've got a couple of blue patches in there. One is a proposed school. I think one is a proposed church. But I think what I would say tonight is to the planning commission, I would say, you know, think qualitatively about what it is that you think is important in a town center, kind of local commercial, kind of third places where we gather. Certainly there is a residential component that serves to help pay and support some of the, the town center, commercial, town center, mixed use components that I think you all have expressed a desire for for years and is expressed in your most recent general plan. But really be thinking qualitatively about what you want. I think that, I think there's an opportunity to look at this kind of, this annexation as a partnership approach. We won't always agree with the, with the proposed direction of the, the developer, but I think that there are a lot of areas where we can agree and there are certain trade-offs that I think that we can start to look at. We have that opportunity as we move into the exploration of an MDA. So just keep that in mind. Think about what it is you want. And I think getting that on the table tonight would be very helpful to me. I've committed to working with Nate and his, his planner, landscape architect, to kind of start looking at what areas that we would tweak, where we would change things, where we would move things. We're hoping to meet next week and start to really look at that and dig down into the details. And so any information that you can convey to me, convey to Nate, I think, I think that would be well, well, well timed tonight.
Hey, thanks, Thomas. And just, I think, you know, you're so integral to the planning of this or the co-planning of some of this that I'm hoping that you're in, you know, you're at least at all the planning board, planning commission meetings going forward as well.
Oh, absolutely. I intend to be. Yeah, definitely.
Cool. Hey, hey, Ryan or Dylan, are you around still? And would you, do you have any comments that you want to make from a, call it kind of a, a technical engineering standpoint, high level that you'd like to add or at least make sure that we think about as a planning commission?
This is Ryan and I am, I am still here. Yes, I, I didn't get to see this ahead of time and I haven't been that involved, but I, I guess just a couple of thoughts. 248 is going to be a limited access highway. So how does that, you know, road network look? And, and, and the, you know, accesses to the highway and then just, just throughout the development? And then also, you know, from a technical standpoint, water, sewer, storm drain and, and other utilities. Who's, who provides that? How does that, that work? Is it something the town can provide? Are we going to work with one of the other entities in the area? I, I don't have any of those answers, but those are some questions that come to mind.
Great questions and, and, and topics, so to speak. And it's almost like we, again, we should have like a set of topics in each area, call it traffic services, infrastructure, you know, what is, what is, what is that, you know, are we transferring anything over? I think, Thomas, you mentioned town center in one of your comments or Jerry did, or both of you did. Does the town center move to this area? Meaning, do we move, you know, and, and, and use that as a building lot? Move this as a kind of the center of, you know, the, the town, town hall, for instance. A lot of towns do that in, when they, when they do these kinds of things. So well, given that, given that, any, any high level questions from the commission before we turn this over to Nate and, and Paul? I'll, I'll take that as a, a no or jump in, I think, when we, when, when Nate starts presenting. So Nate, are you ready to kind of give you vision of the world with Paul at this point and, and share with us your ideas?
Okay, so Paul is not my engineer on this project. It's Eric Langbard. And we're meeting with him, met with him several times. We're meeting with him again on Tuesday with Thomas and we'll go through the plan a little bit more, but a couple of comments, just to clear up a few things. We have, we're working with UDOT on two axes, two accesses off Highway 248. And you can see those on the plan. And, and then another thing that's been brought up, and I, I'll have my attorney here for the next meeting. We thought it'd be better for the next meeting, my EPA attorney, to answer any questions regarding the OU1 site. But I, my understanding with working with EPA is I will have someone on site whenever we are digging and they'll be testing the material. If there's any, if we find any kind of contamination, we'll, we will take it off the site and take it out to either to Willa or if it's not, just matters what the contamination is. But I have done, I've done a phase one report and a phase two report. I've done a phase one and phase two on everything that says not annexing. I've done a phase one report on everything else. So I have five, or at least I have six phase one reports on the stuff that we are still trying to annex into this, into the city, into the town. And those have come back clean. But because of the OU1 site that's in the area, we will have someone on site checking the soils every, every time we did. So if we're digging, they'll be there testing. So the, the red is the town center. It's about 25 or so acres, a little bit more than 25 acres of town center. We have the blue, which is a school site. And then I added the church site last, last night. I thought it'd be important, you know, we just don't have a church site on there. So I added the other blue square in there as, as a church site. And then the orange, let's just call it orange is all different kinds of housing, single family lots, different size lots and townhomes, different style of townhomes. We want to try to meet all the, you know, hit different pricing. You know, the Ivory subdivision that's just down the street from us, they have homes in the $2 million price range. And they also have some moderate income homes. I don't, I don't know their exact price, but we want to hit all different kind, all different prices. And that will be different style of homes. So, you know, the $500,000 price range, up to the million dollar price range. Let's see, what else can I say? We have about, now that I'm not annexing those properties, we probably have about 15 miles of, of trails. Some will be paved, some will be bike, strictly bike trails. If you go up to the, if you pull up the map a little bit, you'll see everything in orange are trails, the little orange lines, maybe go up a little bit more to the top. Oh, other way, sorry, down. My, my bad. But you see those lines in there? Those are, those are bike trails that will connect with the town of Hideout. There are bike trails that will connect with Wasatch County Trails, this subdivision that's going, going in now. And we've been working with them. We'll have two or three places that will connect those trails. And we have about 40% of open space with this, this map you're looking at. And what I presented to the town council on Thursday is that we have a, it's about 497 single family homes or, or townhomes. And then across the street, we didn't, we weren't able to get this annex, but just so you know, across Highway 248, we were planning on doing 297 workforce housing units. But with some of the stuff that Summit County is doing and some of the maneuvering with the, with the courts and so forth, we just didn't want to have any chance of not, not getting it in. And so we had to take out that piece also, which is really, really sad to me because there, there's a huge need for workforce housing. I told for workforce housing. I told, I, I came up last weekend or two weekends ago, and we went to the outlets and I talked to fifteen workers there and every single one of them, but one lived in Salt Lake. And every one of them said they would live up here in Park City if they could afford it, except one person. He said he lives up by the U and he said the nightlife is much better at the U than in Park City. And so there is a huge need for that. We were not able to get that piece as part of the annexation. And so there might be some maneuvering. If you guys want to see some workforce housing, because it is something that's really needed for the area, we would take out some of the housing that's in there and put some workforce housing. Those are the things that Thomas can help us with, with, you know, getting with you guys and see what, see what you really want, the vision that you have for your community. And then the, like I said, the red is the town center. And, you know, I envision the town center having lots of retail, restaurants, grocery. In your, in your current code, you can go up to forty five feet. And so in some of the buildings in those areas, you might have retail on the bottom, office on the second floor and condos on the third, on the third floor. That's still to be planned out and that'll be over the next several months. We'll be, you know, I'll hire an architect to design what you guys want in that area and, and we'll go from, you know, see, see how that lays out. What else can I tell you? We have several parks, as you see. But I think, I mean, I think that's about it. I, you know, we're excited with the trail system and the row, you know, everything that we're bringing in. This, we're, we're connecting it with the Richardson, I think it's called Jordanell Park. Well, what's that? What's the trail called there? Is it Richardson Flats Trail? I forget, but it goes all the way to Colville and it goes into downtown Park City.
Oh, the rail trail?
Rail trail. Thank you, Jerry. Yeah. So with the rail trail, you know, it goes all the way out to Colville and it goes into downtown Park City. So with, with what, with my other developments that I'm doing in the town, and I think I said this on the Lakeview stuff, but you'll be able to get from basically the town of Hideout all the way into Park City without getting on a highway or even just riding your bike. And then you'll also be able to get to Deer Valley with just, just riding your bike on an asphalt trail, which I think is amazing. And so you know, this, with the trail system we're doing here and the parks and the commercial and, you know, the, the school and the church, we're just adding a lot to the whole, not just hideout, but we, we think the whole community. You know, I know there's some opposition and but we, we think it's great for the whole community, not just, not just the town of Hideout. It's something that's needed for the entire area.
Nate, can you talk about the ridge line that runs along the eastern side and view sheds? For example, we've got the, a storage facility there that's depicted on the map in the white.
That, that, I mean, that's one of the neatest things with, with what we were able to keep into the, into the annexation. You really don't, we're in a big bowl. You really don't, you don't see much of it, much of the housing because you are in a bowl. It is three hundred and fifty acres. And like I said, about forty percent of it's open space. Some of the stuff that we were not able to annex is more visible from Highway forty and Highway two forty eight. And, you know, and I don't know about much about the law and how it was repealed and everything like that, but I can tell you when, on Tuesday, when Representative Quinn and Winterton were on the phone, they said there is going to be another annexation law that, and who knows what it's going to allow. They're working through it, but they, this has brought a light to everyone. Everyone at the legislator, legislation. And so it, it has brought a light about, you know, changing some things that don't seem fair. You know, my whole thing is cities should be able to do, you know, counties are kind of, what I've been taught my whole life as a developer is counties are kind of holding areas for, for cities. That may be, I may be taught wrong, but you know, that's, that's what I've been taught my whole life is that counties are kind of holding areas for cities. And so, you know, what we're doing, I, I just don't think it's as bad as the media's made it out to be. We're trying to add a few hundred homes in the area and some commercial that's, that's really, really needed for this area. So I'll answer any questions that you might have and.
Well, that's, that was really good description, Nate. So I, I want one question so that we're clear on the, the map dynamics here, so to speak. Is this area right here, is that the, is that the filings from mine and most of the superfund, the dark, kind of the, the dark areas here? Or am I incorrect?
No, that's exactly right. That's the superfund site. The, it's called the OU one site.
So, and so that's kind of a mound, if I'm not mistaken. And so I, I think, I just want to make sure that we're clear on this. You are, are, are you going to bring in your, call it your environmental engineer, so we can have a discussion on that in more depth? And will that be at the, our next session?
Yes, the next session. I think it's in two weeks. The planning commission is going to meet again for a work meeting and I'll have, I'll have the the groups that did the phase one reports and the phase two reports, and I'll have the attorney there to answer any questions.
Okay, that would be terrific. And I'm sure there'll be a, a few around. Now, originally I think you were annexing this area, but you, you know, does this, now that you're not annexing this area, correct me if I'm wrong on anything here. Are you responsible for any of the superfund cleanup? And will it, so again, maybe that's a question for next week when you have all your experts.
Well, I can tell you the answer to that. So, yeah, I was never annexing the superfund site. In fact, there's still a few, a few of those acres that might be used for the superfund site. I don't think it's been used for years, but and I don't know much about the superfund site because I was never purchasing it. I was never trying to annex it into the town.
And Ralph, that's not on our annexation map either. So it's never been part of, of a annexation concept.
I was trying to annex when we first started just a few months ago. I was trying to annex those parcels that say not annexing.
Yeah, so there's one down here dropped out, right?
Yeah, that was another two hundred and, I think it's about two hundred and forty acres. That just, there's just too many, too many issues with it. There's an illegal subdivision thing going on with Summit County that they're claiming. And we just didn't want it to get convoluted with everything. Also, just so you know, and you probably read in the papers, but everything that's been not being annexed. Park City has a development agreement against those parcels. And I, we'll either work with them or we'll get it resolved somehow, one way or the other, whether it's through the court system or through you know, a handshake deal with, with Mayor Bearman and the council there, trying to work, trying to work it out. My attorneys are telling me that what they did was they thought was illegal. Obviously they don't think that, but we have, we've just kept it out because we didn't want to muddy the, muddy the waters with everything that's been going on. So those have been, those have been left out. Anything with any issues has been left out.
Okay. So any, anything else you want to add? Maybe we'll just open it up to the commission. And, you know, knowing that we're going to get, I'm assuming a lot more environmental questions like how close that is to potential school, you know, kids. I get, so maybe I'll give you my two cents here. At, you know, I'm a homeowner in Hideout, my daughter and, and Park City. And my daughter owns in Parks Edge with my four-year-old grandson and her husband. So, you know, I see myself tied to the area and, and there's a lot of interdependencies here. One is, you know, Parks Edge, the retreat at Jordanell, and some of those areas are potentially impact. Of course, you've got this nice ridge line here, which you almost then don't see, but you know, there's, there's, so that brings into traffic issues. So very, very high level, I think, you know, the way this was approached in, in, in the media and maybe the way you guys, you know, and I'm, I'm going to lay this on you, Nate, you know, because this is your development. Probably wasn't very transparent and, and to be honest with you, that probably got a lot of the bad publicity and maybe to some extent unfairly, but you know, you're still living with, you know, not only convincing some of the hideout, what we are in hideout, but I think if we are understanding of the people that, that are sitting in the donut, that we have to understand their concerns as well. Not as much as perhaps the, you know, the fact that we're at, we would be doing the annexing, but I think it's our responsibility. And I think it's your responsibility to incorporate that, that, you know, that kind of semi-regional thinking across these boundaries into a proper plan. Does that make sense? That's just my, my, my high level here.
Yeah, a hundred percent agree with that. So.
So, so I, I would just say commissioners, you know, it's like, jump in and do you have any questions? Because I, I could sit here probably for an hour on my own, so to speak, and but I don't want, I certainly, I think this is about all of us participating and getting some answers on what's the most important to them.
I will say a couple of things. I mean, I know we're here to talk a little bit about the MDA. A couple of things that we've talked about putting in the MDA is what Jerry said about the commercial, not just leaving the commercial for last. And so we'll have Polly and Bruce Baird figure out some wording for that. We want to make sure that the town is not liable for any kind of cleanup or anything like that. And so we'll put that in the MDA. Oh, there was another thing we talked about on the phone. There, there's just several things that Polly and Bruce will make sure that the town's not liable for anything. And, you know, you guys get what you, what you're trying to accomplish down in this area. So.
And, and as you know, you do fall under the, the new zoning. And I think, did you get a copy of, do, do you have the? Yeah, because there might be issues around that, so to speak. And, you know, I mean, you know, again, when you do a development of this size, there's some flexibility, but you know, at the other hand, we, we kind of spent a lot of time looking at those, the, the, you know, improvement of what the pre-existing zoning was. So I think that's going to require some call it cooperation, sharing of ideas and then trying to determine maybe like what you were saying before and maybe what Bruce said, you know, it's kind of a, an organically best, you know, environment here and what that means from a zoning standpoint.
I mean, the thing that, the thing that I can say, working with the communities, I mean, we started working with Summit County. I had several meetings with Pat Putt, who is their planner, and we, we actually hired their engineer that he recommended, not their engineer, but they recommended we use Eric Langbar. And so, you know, you're seeing, you're reading a lot of stuff in the paper, but this is, what we're doing is exactly what they wanted us to do. They, he really liked our plan. Now, he said that he hates it in the media now, but when we were working with them, he really, he really liked that plan, this plan. And so we, we've hired their, the engineer that they've hired, you know, to do their stuff behind Home Depot, that they're developing. And so, yeah, we don't feel like we're doing something that no one wants us to do. We, we met with them several times and this is what, this is what they liked. And so, yeah, we just feel like we're just kind of going along with what, with, what the other planners in the area liked.
You know, there were some, there was some information that surfaced, and I'm not sure if we're talking about the same person, but there was a, there was an engineer who worked for Park City for a very short period of time and he, he, you know, so he had some services issues, certainly. Where are you going to get all the water to come in here? You know, there isn't enough. So I think we need to go, you know, as Jerry was saying, we need to go down that route so that we're answering some good questions and, and issues that came up by that individual. Maybe Thomas and, you know, or Polly, maybe you know him. And I can't reckon, I don't remember his name, but he was an engineer, fairly well respected from what I gather, but spent a very short time in Park City. So he had some three or four points.
Yeah, just saying, we have, we have four hundred acre feet of water right now with this, this property. We have another ninety seven acre feet that we're working on. So that's about five hundred and ninety seven or four hundred and ninety seven acre feet of water for, for basically four hundred and ninety seven lots. You know, we don't think, if it's, if they, if it's the same requirements for water that we had for Deer Waters and Deer Springs, we have more than ample water for this entire area. Now, who's going to serve us? We don't know. But in the development agreement, we'll put in there that we will not be able to pull a permit, not be able to break ground until those, those issues are worked out.
Okay, that makes sense. I think I'd certainly want to see, because he sounded like he had some fairly intelligent questions or thoughts or concerns. And I think we're in the process of, you know, certainly working, working with you to compile those questions at this early stage and say, what's prioritized?
Yeah, we do have, we have a lot of water. I mean, we have, like I, like I say, four hundred already, another ninety seven, we're looking at buying. And so, I mean, that's a lot of water for, for a development.
Nate, this is a pretty big project. So, you know, we were talking about, you know, financing and whatnot. Since you aren't tackling the superfund, I think there's been two thousand superfund sites that have averaged about twenty five to fifty million dollars over the past thirty years. So if you're not getting into that, you still have a big chunk of, you know, so to speak, risk or liability. How we, so, you know, are you, you know, I know there's, during this process, it's going to be a phased, phased in approach, but how are you going to protect the town, high level, so to speak, from, from a financial risk standpoint? Will there be some super bond or surety that you're, you know, you're going to?
We'll put a bond up, yeah, we'll put a bond up for the improvements. We're, we're not going to borrow money on the, on the ground that we're buying now. We, we will pay cash for the ground. And I'd assume we'll probably pay cash for the improvements. So I, I am working with a group on the commercial stuff and they've done, they did some, I think, I can't remember what it's called, but it's on Seventy Second, that superfund site down there. And they've built several office buildings. In fact, they've been given awards for how they've handled the superfund sites. And so I, I honestly don't see the superfund site as being a real issue, especially when I've done all the testing. And we'll have someone on site as every day, every time we dig, we'll have someone there testing. So.
It, will there be, by the way, you know, do you plan on some kind of barrier between the site, the superfund area and say, the, you know, I think the red is a more, more commercial. You know, do, will, will there be any kind of like, just either natural barriers or other barriers that you might consider? And again, maybe that's better question asked in our next session, but food.
I think that's better next session. I think it's really up to you guys. I mean, well, if you guys want some kind of birmingham there, if you guys want, it's just, you know, we're, we're willing to do what you guys want to do. And that, I think it's more of a, a question for the attorneys and but I can tell you the testing we've done has come back clean on the stuff we're annexing. So.
Oh, can you unmute Jerry, please?
Johnny, you still in charge of our mute, unmute?
Thank you. I didn't think you wanted to hear my sneeze and I, I, I forgot. I couldn't unmute after that. So something else that I'd like the commission to consider and Nate, you said you were, the traffic study that was included on our last packet was out of date and it, it didn't address this particular representation. And one of the things that we heard from retreated Jordanell and Parks Edge pretty clearly in our last attempt is they really aren't keen on driving a bunch of traffic up Richardson Flats Road there off of two forty eight. So the traffic studies that are completed then based upon this particular layout, you know, I'd be interested in making sure that we're not negatively impacting that intersection. Now, if we get a light there, I think that's a huge win if somehow we're able to get a light there earlier than what UDOT is contemplating. I think that could help a lot. But I, I want to be sensitive that we're not driving a bunch of traffic into their neighborhood. You know, that, that's going to decrease their quality of life.
Yeah. And that's, you know, that's why we're doing the two entrances off two forty eight. That's, you know, that's where the majority of the people are going to go.
Nate, do you envision those, those new access in, onto two forty eight as another type of crossroads where people have to make turns across traffic or you, will you be able to go under or over and and how people drive?
The traffic study we did, it, it had the, the most units we could put on there because I, it was easy to come down from it but not add to it because then it adds to the different, you know, more of the study. And so the, the study we did actually had thirty five hundred homes in here. A couple hundred thousand feet of commercial. And so the, the study's completely different. We're down to four hundred and ninety so, or so homes. Not really sure what the, you know, town center is going to look like. Really need to work with you guys on that. And so I've, I've asked, I'm getting And so I've, I've asked, I'm getting an updated traffic report. And it'll probably, you know, it's going to, it takes a couple weeks, but I should have that probably by the next time we meet as a planning commission.
You know, there's a lot less traffic. So, you know, now I think, or not maybe a lot less, but there's, there's been a decreased amount of traffic on, you know, 248 from, from COVID, from what I've seen. So how do we know that there is big, there's, you know, once, once the spigot of COVID turns off, how do we know? And I, I, I would say this is probably true with any development right now. How, how do we project out in the future based, do we go back to historical traffic or, and, and add some? What's, has anybody come up with some thoughts on that?
I'm sure the traffic, so if you would like me to get the traffic study company here in two weeks, I'll gladly do that. And you can ask them all those questions. I, I don't know anything about how they get their data and so forth, but if you would like me to have them at the next meeting, I, I will have them at the next meeting.
But traffic.
It, it looked like the last study was done using January of this year traffic, which would have been, you know, the height of our ski season prior to COVID. So it, it probably, I don't know if they're basing the next version off of that, those same traffic numbers or not.
I can say, when we met with UDOT, they said before COVID, the Browns Canyon was very, very close to being a, a light. Then COVID hit and traffic did start and slowed down, and their numbers weren't, weren't making it light on, on Browns Canyon. So.
I know, I know my daughter actually drives around, but Park says it takes the construction access road, which will be closed down. Once they finish that road, and there won't be any access, then everybody's going to pour out of the Browns Canyon, you know, intersect. And they've, I don't know how many accidents there have been there. So there are, that, that area is already clamoring for better safety, you know, so to speak, coming out of there. Because when you're coming around that corner at 65 miles an hour, there's not much room to stop between that intersection. So something's got to be done, no matter what, notwithstanding.
It won't be long until there'll be a traffic light there for sure with all the growth in the area. So.
Yep. My question was more, will you be able to work with UDOT and do an underpass or an overpass? That people don't have to cross traffic? Or are you, your roads will just access 248 the way Jordan L Parkway and Browns Canyon access it now?
That's, that's the way the traffic, when I read the traffic study, that's what it's done.
Are you going to be putting lights at those intersections?
If they meet it, and it, it, it barely met it when there was 3,500 homes. I don't think it'll ever meet it with 500 homes.
Well, but you've also got the commercial that's going to drive traffic.
Yeah, that, that's true. So let's see what the next, the next study says. You know, I mean, obviously, we're going to have to do long turn lanes, Excel and D cell lanes to make it, to make it safer to get in and out of there. And that was all part of the study. I can't remember how many feet they were. But I'll tell you, obviously, traffic is a huge issue. Let me get, I'll get the traffic, the traffics guys here for the next meeting.
But it kind of leads into my next, my next focus point is some sort of mass transport. I mean, they've got the parking lot out there. The commercial area probably could have other, some parking as well. Do you envision some method of, you know, enabling more mass transportation and working with, how do we work with Park City for their bus system, or create a bus system, or do a monorail, or do something to help the traffic situation so that we could park in a place like Richardson Flats and, and take transportation to other areas without having to get, take cars into those other areas?
Yeah. Now, I mean, that was my vision when we first started this, when we were working with Summit County. We looked in, and I, I have the study, we looked into doing a PRT traffic, which is a, not a motorized, non-driver car on the, the rail trail. You could, we, we figured you could get to Deer Valley or downtown Park City and with, with, through a PRT system. But then everything kind of stopped with Summit County. So we would, I would love to see some kind of bus system, or, I mean, a PRT system would be really cool, but, you know, Richardson Flats or that, the rail trail gets used so much, and it'd be, it'd be a pretty substantial undertaking to work with Park City and Summit County to, to have some kind of vision there to do that. But we did do, we did do a study on that, and I, I love that idea. We've even, and this is, it's never going to happen, but we looked into, because of the parking there, taking a tram to the new Deer Valley site. It's about $9 million a mile, and there's about five miles. And so that didn't work. But yeah, there's, there's some really cool things you can do with, with this area being right in the middle and that big parking lot. But we'd have to all get together and just really work, work that out. And I think there'll be a time when they are, when we, when we can get together.
Nate, have there been any conversations about an additional exit off of 40 on to Richardson Flats?
You know, the mayor, I've talked to the mayor a little bit about that, and he's been to several meetings with UDOT, and he said no.
Nate, this is Bruce again. The commercial area, 25 acres. Do you envision that, or do you have a concept of, of that, or is that something you're looking for us to provide? I mean, are you thinking more, say, Kimball Junction versus Park City Main Street, or a combination of something?
My vision is Park City Main Street, and even my vision of some of the homes would be Park City, that Main Street area of the homes, you know, up in the hills there. But yeah, Thomas and I are just starting this process, and so we'll be able to tell you a lot more over the next month. But we want to have public input. We want to have your, your guys' input. I mean, this is really your town center, and so I'm, I'm all ears for what you guys want to do.
Well, I think one of the mistakes that Park City has made, and they made, they made a number, and I, Thomas, that's no reflection on you or whoever was doing that planning, but I mean, Kern's Boulevard itself is, you know, and the encroachment that was allowed was, was a mistake, in my, certainly in my opinion. Because that's where, that, that's, that's one of the, that created the initial almost compounding problems out, out here to get into a store. You're stuck in traffic, you know, whenever the, almost at major times of the day. But what I, but I also noticed was, you know, Kimball Junction is still undergoing what I would call kind of recommunitization, so to speak. So I, you know, to that extent, I would want our town set at our high level. Again, you know, we haven't defined anything. We're not micro-managing this at this point. But that would have a more integrated approach to things, both between the living and, and living quarters and the, the stores. And that's what, you know, retro, retroactively, they're trying to retrofit into Kimball Junction. Hopefully, we don't have to do that, and I wouldn't want us to be in that situation, because now they're overcoming what they should have had when they, when they kind of planned that out. So connecting, connecting the various, and, you know, people traffic with, with the commercial traffic. So not that that's a bad, not that it was terrible, but there, you know, I think, you know, the new Kimball Junction planning document addresses some of those concerns that, you know, they just didn't think about initially.
Yeah, I, I, I will say, my vision is to be able to live, work, and play in this, in this area. If you don't want to leave, you don't have to. I mean, I want to have the retail that will accommodate everything. If you, if you want an office in this area, you know, we'll have some office buildings. We'll have the trail systems. You know, you really, you know, I just want, I want it to be a walkable area. I mean, that, that's my vision, is that you don't have to leave if you don't want to leave.
Yep, and everything connects nicely. And there's, 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 you know, the different, different areas interconnect, so to speak, within here. And that includes the, the green, the green spaces. Since you're not annexing, could we also, when you, and I'm not sure this is going to be at the next meeting, but maybe that's in a subsequent meeting, because I think we already got transit environment, and that could, that could take us through a, a couple of, and services probably that will take us through, and at least a couple of hours, but recreation. So now that you kind of collapsed the green, so to speak, in terms of non-annexing, what, what, what can we do here to optimize the, you know, the recreation?
Well, so we'll, we'll still put the trail systems through the, through the green spaces. We'll build a park in the green spaces. The green space is about 240 acres. And so, you know, we'll, we'll have a, we'll have a park in there. We'll have the trail system going through there. And our, our hope is, to be honest, in March, the legislators change the law back, and we can annex it. You know, I mean, that's, that's, that's our hope, and who knows if that'll ever happen, but if, if not, it'll just, it'll just be open space.
Okay.
At least, I mean, unless Summit County wants to work on something, which, you know, every time I turn around, I'm getting sued by them, so I don't think they're going to want to work with me.
Well, if, if, if we, if you create something nice and jointly, so to speak, maybe, maybe the thinking will, will change, but, you know, there's probably a little bit to go before that. I think, yeah.
I had a couple of comments and questions. The dark area in front of the large park area on the left lower side is a sport and recreation center? What is the dark area that is, you know, not colored right now?
The, the dark green area? So.
The dark, that the dark, it's right above, go to, put your cursor left.
Couldn't, couldn't catch you on that. Where?
All right, so.
Does it look like there's ponds there? Is that what you mean, where the ponds are?
Yeah, it's just, just below the Richardson's Flat Road, and it's above the dark green area, very dark green, right there.
Yeah.
What is that?
That's part of the OU1 area. It's, it's a wetland area.
So that's, that's definitely a super fund then?
Yeah, there's, there's several ponds there. You can go there anytime of the day. And I mean, I was out there about two months ago, and there was five sets of geese with their, you know, goslings running around. It's, it's a really cool area. We would love to beautify it if we get, you know, if we get annexed in this area, then that's something we would look at, because it, it's a really cool park-type setting area.
And you know, and I, I'm going to first start with, I mean, of course, a lot of people that I've been talking to, their, their number one concern is the super fund site. And, you know, and then digging in, as you're digging, you know, coming across them, that's great that you've done, you've done your homework and a lot of legwork on the phase one reports, you know, and that's, that's just a major concern of mine and my neighbor. So, you know, that's all contingent upon that.
Yeah, so, I mean, like I say, I can only do so much testing. We've done all the testing we could possibly do.
Right.
Doesn't mean that when we're digging the sewer lines, they're 10 or 12 feet deep, that we're not going to find something. And if we do, we'll have someone there testing, we'll have someone there testing every scoop we do, basically. I did the same thing in California. We were on an, on an Indian, not even an Indian reservation, but at one time, they thought there was Indians that lived on this, and it was about a 200 lot subdivision in Coachella, California. And we had to have someone from the Indian tribe there, an engineer there. I mean, it cost me several hundred thousand dollars to do that, and they found one, they found one arrowhead. So, but yeah, I mean, we're, we are planning on doing that. The last thing we want to do is put someone in an area that's, has some problems. So if we find anything, we will ship it out to Twilla, to the, you know, where they take that kind of material. So
Putting a school there and residential, you know, you know, fairly close. I mean, that, I mean, how far away do you think that super fund is from the school? You know, that one or the one by the, by the parking lot, you know, it's.
Yeah, let me get that, let me get, I, I don't have a clue, to be honest. But I will have my attorney, he'll, he'll be, he can answer any of those questions.
Right, right. Okay. So that, that's my, you know, that's probably my number one concern at this point.
I'm writing down all the concerns, and like I said, I'll get, I'll get a traffic guy here next time. I'll have the attorney for the EPA here next, or my EPA attorney here next time. He can really answer all those questions.
And this is key also, made me think about it when, as mentioned, Kern's Boulevard. All the trails I see here, like the orange, the large orange, I guess that connects to Richardson's Flat, is that a paved trail, correct?
Well, some of Richardson Flats is not paved.
Not Richardson's Flat, I mean, rail trail.
Some of the rail trail is not paved. In fact, I don't think, I don't think any of it is paved in this area.
Okay. There's an orange line paralleling or going along with the Flat Road. There's an orange line next to it, just below it, going out toward the rail trail, I believe. Out that way, right? Yes. See that orange line? Is that a trail?
Yeah, my orange lines are trails.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll, and everyone, if you guys, I've always said my, I will do 10-foot asphalt trails. Obviously, the bike, the bike pass and things like that, that, you know, will be dirt. But we'll have, we'll have miles and miles of the asphalt trails.
Right. So he is, I really want to do this, if we're going to do this, and we need to have those trails under the roads. You know, to have the crossword coming, crossing over I think is just Richardson's Flat Road, crossing, you'll have like one, two, three, like crosswalks. I mean, we've got to have a safe way, not going over, but under would be preferable. I mean, that, that I think, I don't want to have to come and revisit things like Kern's Boulevard, which I know is, is busier right now than this, but this can be one day busy, who knows? And, and we should do it right the first time.
Okay. So, yeah, what about Thomas on that?
Okay. Where would you?
Sorry, Donna. Go ahead. You finish your.
I just wanted to say one more thing. Where would you connect the, where, where, where would the other second entrance from 248 be? Because it looks like at the top, you're not annexing there. And then.
Well, even though we're not annexing, we will still have accesses off there.
It's going to be the one on the right, the access that's not, looks like there's one going under, which we're not annexing, so that probably will go away.
No, no, we're, both those roads will be put in. Even though we're not annexing those parcels, that's what we're planning on getting into the, into the development.
Okay. So, okay, so maybe, and then, so you'll have three entrances?
Well, you, you can get there from Richardson Flats Road. You can get there from, off of Kern's Boulevard, and you can get the two entrances off 248.
Oh, okay.
Or Jordan L, Jordan L Parkway, I guess. You know, there, there's that way. You have the two entrances off 248, and then you could come in and go, come off two Kern's Boulevard and go underneath the highway there.
Lights is from the left, yes. With the two at the top of the page. That's all. At the very top of the page, underneath not annexing, where you, where we're not, where we're not even like at the very top, that triangular section onto the, to the top part of 248. Yeah, see?
Yeah, so that's, at, at one time, up until Thursday, actually, we decided to take that out of the annexation. Going to be another access there, and that was going to be 272 workforce housing units.
Correct. I remember you saying that. So that, you're not going to have a road to it if we're not going to be building it. That's, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Wanted to clarify that.
Yeah. I mean, I own the property. One day, we hope to have something over there. And we'd love to do the workforce housing, but right now, the, the council decided not to take that piece in, and so that's not part of our, our annexation.
Okay. All right. That's all I have. Go ahead, Ralph.
Yeah, well, thank you, Donna.
I was just going to follow up on what you were saying, an, an initial part, particularly on the environmental. Again, I'm hoping a lot of that will be answered, but is there, you know, is, and, and maybe you can have your environmental engineer address this. What would be the cost to clean up the site, you know, at, you know, estimate at least? Is it 2 million? Is it 20 million? Is it, you know, what would, you know, what would, what would be the, you know, the, kind of the, the big number that we'd be looking at?
Let me tell you, I, I got a price to cap. I, I did get a price to cap the. I, I got a price to cap. I, I did get a price to cap the, that entire OU one area. And for a four-foot cap was eleven million dollars.
So I, I'm not quite following you, Nate, eleven million dollars and what would that do? Would that just cap what's in place or would that clean everything out, so to speak?
Well, no, you would just cap it. So what, what they've done, they brought in all the contaminated soils and they, they put a cap on it already. But we would, we would, I mean, when I say we, we looked at doing, you know, another four-foot cap on there and actually working with the EPA and buying it and making it into huge parks and, and using the ground. It was eleven million dollars to do that.
I guess that's consistent with the cost of superfund cleanups without even.
Seen a number that Summit County said fifty million, but to cap the site, it was, it was eleven million dollars.
Yeah, that's still a lot of money. You know, I, I know we're after nine o'clock and I want to be reasonable, like all of us have other things to do, so to speak. Potentially, at least I do, and try to end this not too reasonably soon, so within the next ten minutes. Can we, so Bruce or, you know, or Tony, do you have any, you know, things that you want Nate to bring to the table to inform us on the next meeting and, and two thoughts, you know, so that's one thing that we could share right now. But maybe we could do some things offline because you never think about everything immediately in one meeting. There's a lot to digest. You know, could we do some sharing offline and then you guys could, you know, prep a little bit better coming into the next meeting? Either with the right person or the right information. Would that make sense?
Can I jump in on that? I just want to be careful. I, I mean, if you want either me or maybe Thomas to be like a repository for questions that we could then give to the developer, but what I don't want to have happen is have kind of offline discussions and basically create a meeting outside of the open meeting. So. I would say maybe using Thomas as a resource in that case might be helpful or, I mean, it could be me as well, but he's probably a better contact.
No, that makes total sense, Polly, and, and I probably should, I know we're, we're always touching upon making sure that we keep things open and transparent. And that's my firm belief too, so don't want to do anything that we're going to tread, you know, waters that we don't want to get into. If you think that work where Thomas could be, as, as our town planner, could be a funnel of called topical information, what we want to, you know, kind of accumulate in the next couple of meetings, that would be useful.
Yeah, get all the questions into Polly and, and then I can be more prepared for what you guys are, you know, so we don't, we're not here till ten, eleven o'clock at night. Just give me the questions and I'll make sure I have the right people here to answer them and, and we, I think that'll be, you know, we can make better use of the time.
Yeah, be a little bit more efficient.
Bad use of time, but we can get a lot more done if I know exactly who you guys want to see and the questions that you have. I mean, I, I know from tonight's conversation that I need to get some of the experts here, so, but if you have anything else, let, let me know.
That, that would be great. And, and Bruce or Tony, any last minute or last questions that you guys have or thoughts before maybe we adjourn the meeting?
No, I think I've, I've asked the questions for now. I'll need to think about some more.
And, and thank you for your time. I know the work meetings are taken away from your families, but I, and I really appreciate it, so thank you very much.
Ralph, my only concern, I'm just curious to see what the commercial aspect is going to be, considering that's what driving the town to do this. And initially, my initial feeling is that twenty-five acres might be a little too light.
It, it, it definitely could be and we can expand the town center to however, however big or, you know, I, I do better with commercial. And so I would like to make it as big as we possibly can, so. Well, Thomas and I will look at that. But twenty-five acres is a big site. I believe the Redstone is about twenty-two acres, that whole, the Redstone area there, so. I might be wrong. Let me get that number, but I, I looked it up several months ago and I believe it's only, it's twenty-two acres, so.
Yes, Redstone on that, on the, on the, the one side of the, the road, so to speak. You have a basin rec, okay. Interesting. Okay. A lot of great points and Jerry, thanks for, thanks for really prepping us on some of this. I'd say, does anyone, if there's, unless there's anything last, any last cabinet, let's, let's call it a night and thanks Nate. Much appreciated for all the info you shared. Should we, anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
I will.
I'll second it.
Is that too quick?
Sounds good to me. Bruce, I think you're, you're the last one. You okay?
I vote yes.
Okay, all right. Well, have a great evening. Thanks, thanks again.
Thank you very much again. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Vice versa.